Mrs. Peak, could you please call us out of closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, the City Council has reconvened from closed session during which it discussed items one through three of the closed session agenda. On item number one, conference with real property negotiators. They conferred with the city manager, Matt Traino of IDS, and the city attorney regarding conditions, price, and terms. And for joint use of city real property identified as APN 222-17038 with the San Diego Football Club and approved the, an exclusive negotiating agreement for joint use agreement. The item number two, the City Council discussed potential litigation involving SEMA Construction on the San Marcos Creek District Infrastructure Project. They provided direction to staff and no reportable action was taken other than that. On conference with legal counsel under pending litigation, City of San Marcos versus Green Go Industries and Hector Rubio and individual San Diego Superior Court case number thirty-seven, twenty-two-three, zero-zero-zero-six-five-seven-nine. City Council provided direction to the city attorney with respect to the parameters of a proposed settlement and provided further direction to the city council, to the city's council in that regard. And that concludes the reportable action on that matter. Concludes the closed session report, Madam Mayor.
With that, the special meeting is adjourned and we will go right into our regular City Council meeting for June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. Could I have a roll call, please? Mr. Scullik?
Councilmember Musgrove, here. Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. And I did want to, I'm not sure, Mrs. Peak, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Jenkins did, did show up for, or she was, she was in the back, she was there for our closed session?
That's correct, Madam Mayor. She was present, as were all other council members during the closed session proceedings.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we noted that. All right, moving on to our Pledge of Allegiance. We have our Girl Scouts here with us this evening. Yes? Actually, you could come down to the podium. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And do you have an invocation this evening for us?
God of peace, we invite you to reside over this meeting. Even if we have different opinions, give us spirit of unity. Help us to listen politely as others share their points of view. Help us to carefully consider the relevant information that has been gathered. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions. Help us to work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have proclamations and presentations. I actually went out of order on the last thing. So anyway, if the council could please join me up front, that would be great. I like starting our meetings on time, so I get a little ruffled sometimes when we start late. Anyway, so next up, we have our presentations. We have the Girl Scouts Gold Award recipients. So Sierra Stanley, Ava Malinowski, Kiana Monaco, Jacob X. If you could come on down and we're going to, I'm going to read just one of the, oops, sorry, Jacob, nope, you're the next one. So Sierra and Ava and Kiana, if you could come on down, that would be great. And then I'm going to ask you to share a little bit about what your project was. But with, we present, all three of you, if you could come over here, that'd be great. With an honorable certificate of recognition for your outstanding achievements and contributions to the community. Sierra has demonstrated exceptional dedication and leadership exemplifying the core values of the Girl Scouts of America, which are honesty, responsibility, courage, respect, and compassion. They have made a significant impact through their project, dress code embodying the spirit of civic responsibility and making a difference in the lives of others. Okay, Sierra, I'll get that to you. And would you like to share a little bit about your project? And I think you all have different projects. Yes, you do.
I wanted to change the dress code after I saw on my first day of junior year that some people getting dress code for wearing crop tops while others weren't. And I thought that the injustice was worth bringing to the principal's attention. And I spoke to the president of the SMUSD Board. And I met with the deputy superintendent and Ms. Frias, which was really nice experience to meet with the people that are in charge of changing things and to make the school a better and more equal place. So it was really exciting to see the difference between my junior and my senior year. And people were allowed to express themselves and dress the way that they want to dress. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I also did want to note that Sierra is from Troop forty-four ninety-nine. Next up is Anna Malinowski, Troop forty-six twenty-eight, for project Turning Our World Into A Butterfly Habitat. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, I did want to hear all about that. I love butterflies. Okay.
Okay, so for my project, I was, it was actually really hard coming up with a thing that I loved and that I could make sustainable and make an impact in the world. And then I decided that butterflies are really cool and I really like them. So, and I wanted to give back to my elementary school, Paloma Elementary, it's in San Marcos. And I developed a curriculum teaching kids about environment, butterflies, and like sustainability when gardening in the home, as well as like just how you can kind of swap synthetic fertilizers for just natural alternatives. So we did, I taught over seven hundred students. And they all got their own little kit on nasturtium seeds, which is a type of flower that attracts a butterfly. And yeah, and I'm still hearing about it to this day. I'm still hearing that there's butterflies around and that all the kids are just happy because it's a type of plant. It's very, it's very, I guess, abundant. And it kind of just keeps going, keeps giving. So that's, that's my project.
Awesome. Thank you. I have a vertical grower in my backyard and I just noticed I have two cocoons right hanging from the rafters right above it. So I'm excited to see what's going to come out. Yes, okay, next is Kiana Monaco for Troop forty-four, I'm sorry, forty-two thirty-three. And your project is Kendall Frost Marsh Carbon Sequestration. All right, we got to hear more about this because I'm not, I'm not, I'm going to be honest, I'm not quite sure what that is. And so I want to hear all about it. So come on over. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. All right, let's hear all about that.
Well, first off, I would like to thank the mayor for recognizing me for my Girl Scout Gold Award. I decided to pick a topic I am passionate about. As, as the mayor mentioned, I did a project on carbon sequestration, which is the process of an environment such as a wetland, taking carbon from the atmosphere and burying it into sediments and soils. So I, well, I for one am someone who just loves being outdoors. And I have a large appreciation for nature. And I just like being outside, hiking, all of that. So I wanted to do something to kind of help, you know, like protect our natural resources and the overall environment. And since, you know, there's carbon emissions and wetlands do a great job at sequestering carbon. They're actually about ten times more efficient than an average forest. We have wetlands here down in Mission Bay. And the specific one I focused on was Kendall Frost Marsh. It is also conjoined with UC Natural Reserve System there. And they also have an adjacent wetland next to it. And right now, the habitat is under a lot of pressure because it is small and it's really close to a lot of like infrastructure and buildings. So the, actually, I think they're right now working on a plan to like, like expand it and move some things around so it all works out for everyone. Anyway, I just hope to encourage others to join me in this cause. And thank you for inviting me to attend this evening. Thank you.
I think what you were looking to say is reforestation or replanting the vegetation so that it actually does what you want it to do and that's clean there. So we actually just did that in our Creek Project. We just went in and revegetated. That's what we call it on our common terms, but revegetation does that pretty well. So anyway, thank you for all, all three of you for your efforts. And now you get to take a picture with us and you get to shake everyone else's hand. So the City Council, we're a team, we stick together, and so we want to definitely encourage you. And thank you for all of your efforts together. Thank you. And I would definitely be remiss if I did not mention the families of these young ladies. It is, it's a lot of work. They're doing the work, but you have to get them to where they need to go. And so thank you for your efforts in that. Next up is going to be Jacob and Jacob X with Mission Hills High School, the twenty-twenty-four Student Video Contest Second Place Winner. If you can come on down, Jacob. And I think we have actually a video of yours, correct? Okay, congratulations. And we're going to watch that real quick. Okay, all right.
Hey, I might deadline too. I really need some fresh air.
Did you just see fresh air?
No.
Yes, you did. Stop. Come with me.
What? No, no, no. Where are we going?
Dude, how are we here?
You said you want a fresh air, right? Welcome to the park and recreation issue. Parks promote green spaces that conserve our natural ecosystem and sustain our clean air and water.
They also promote public health, whether it's walking a dog or playing basketball.
Parks also improve levels of reducing stress, anger, and anxiety. So you could get that deadline done, just for you.
It's also a place for kids to be outside and it's crucial for their development.
Too glad you're able to come outside and enjoy the scenery.
Dude, yeah, I feel so much more relaxed now.
Are those your deadline due tonight?
Cute. Congratulations. All right, you have to share with us two things that I'm actually wanting to know. First of all, who has been there when they had a deadline and they realized, oh, shoot, it's tomorrow? And then also, kind of where you came up with your inspiration for that? If you could do that, share that with us, that'd be great.
All right, so first of all, I'm really grateful to be recognized for this national competition that I won in second place. But I want to give some background information on what this video actually is. So the competition was for how special districts in the community make a difference. And so I just decided to do how parks and recreations made a difference because Halandia Park is right next to Mission Hills. So we had to make a one-minute video on how special districts make an impact in the community. So the inspiration for this was really easy because like this deadline was pretty much two weeks before. So the deadline was the inspiration. And so we just kind of walked around, made some cool ideas. And I also learned a bunch of editing skills from this, so that was really nice, too. So parks and recreations do make an impact here in our community. In my childhood, I went to every park basically around my neighborhood. And they brought a lot of memories when I just went to the park behind, behind the parking lot. So yeah, parks really make a difference in the community, especially for children growing up. And even adults, too. Adults can enjoy the fresh air around and, you know, enjoy the park. So yeah, I'm really grateful.
Do you know our nickname?
Your nickname?
Yeah, the nickname for the city. San Marcos, San Parkos.
San Parkos. I've never heard of that.
Yes, it is. So right up your alley.
So I do want to give a special thanks to Ms. Nysley, right? My video production teacher for giving me this opportunity to compete in this video and eventually win second place. So thank you, Ms. Nysley, for giving me this opportunity.
All right, congratulations. Let's shake everyone's hands. Okay. Oh, nope.
Nope, no, you need a picture.
Not of us, it's in here.
Smile. One, two, three. One more. One, two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Juneteenth, and we actually have two recipients for this one. It's going to be Beatrice Palmer from North County NAACP. And then also Lionel Salisbury. And so Lionel is actually, if you could both come down, that'd be great. So Lionel is one of our residents and he has an annual Juneteenth celebration every year at his home. And he invites his, the members of his community, that's actually how I met him. They sent me a message. I'd never met him before. And I said, well, that's kind of cool. I'll have to check that out. And it happened to be on Father's Day that year. And I was saying to myself, oh, I got to hurry because I had to get to my father-in-law's house. But I went by and it was a wonderful celebration with authentic food and just really a beautiful group of people really coming together and celebrating Juneteenth. And then we have Beatrice here this evening. And I'd like for each of you to take a moment to tell us about why Juneteenth is important to you and why, and I'm going to read actually one of the proclamations real quick, though. So the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes Juneteenth. "Our country is a vibrant mosaic of people from every nation on earth, united in the principles of equality, freedom, and justice, which are essential for a thriving human civilization. On January first, eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation declaring that all persons held as slaves within any state or designated part of a state shall be then, thencefore, and forever free. On June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Major General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, delivering the joyous news to the end of both the Civil War and slavery. Whereas, the celebration of the end of slavery known as Juneteenth is the oldest known public commemoration of this monumental event in the United States. Juneteenth not only celebrates the end of slavery, but also serves as a powerful reminder of the precious promises of freedom, equality, and opportunity that lie at the heart of the American dream, inspiring us to continue the important work toward achieving racial equality. And we, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, June nineteenth, as Juneteenth and reaffirm the city's unwavering commitment to fostering dialogue and collaboration with all parties dedicated to addressing and overcoming racial inequalities in our city." So if you could come on over, each of you, that'd be great. There you go. Congratulations and thank you for all of your hard work. But if you'd like to say a few words, that'd be great.
Yes, in the spirit of Ubuntu, which means that you and I are one, I just want to thank the mayor and the honorable council for recognizing the important work that the North San Diego County NAACP does for our community. We're one of the oldest organizations, the NAACP, that serves all of our community but stands to bring equality and justice for individuals of color. And for us, this is special because there was a time where we weren't allowed to sit in these spaces. And while we were never born slaves, we were enslaved. And I encourage you to change that language, to help us change that language, that we were enslaved rather than that we were slaves. So we partner with several cities and our annual Juneteenth is held at the City of Oceanside. But we invite our brothers and sisters from San Marcos and the neighboring cities to come and join us in celebration of the freedom that was offered to all of us through Juneteenth. So thank you so much. And my name is Bea, Beatrice Palmer, pronoun she, hers, and ella. Gracias.
Thank you. All right, Lionel, congratulations. Thank you. Get that to you. And you do have to tell everyone about your little celebration because it's great.
Absolutely.
All right, and the inspiration behind that, too.
Well, first off, thank you, Mayor, council members. Thank you so much. What an honor to, one, be in the city of San Marcos, our beautiful city, and, two, being able to be recognized for this. This is not me alone, my brilliant wife Natalie, who said we need to express what Juneteenth is about. She and I grew up where we knew what Juneteenth was. But it was nice to be able to set up a living room setting and a living library of sorts in our driveway to be able to just discuss what Juneteenth is and to just educate and open our homes to others, to be able to just be a part of it and enjoy this, this celebration with us. So what an honor, and what an honor for the mayor to come by and spend some time. I think the cake or ice cream melted a little bit in the car that day. But I really appreciate you coming by and being a part of our celebration. So thank you so much.
Now we're going to take picture with you. So yes, whoever you'd like to take it, Phil. I think Phil could take it for you. And we're sorry that Natalie couldn't be here.
All right, just getting tight, everybody. Couple.
Two more to go?
Yep. Go through as quick as I can. Last one. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Yes. Okay, I think it's this one right here. Yeah, make sure you get the right phone. Okay, the right phone. All right, one more. And this is actually a very exciting one, too, for us as a city. Kristy Frias and Amy Ventalo, I always say this wrong, Ventual, Ventualo? I'm so close. Ventatulo. Okay. Well, so if you could come on down. And so many of you may not know this, but with our COVID relief funds, we actually worked with the school district, funding, helping fund, you can come over on this side, an important mental health awareness program through the school district, implemented by the school district. But it was something we wanted to do as a council and as a city because we recognized all of the issues that were brought forth by the pandemic in our youth and how they were struggling. And so one of the things that we really sat down is how did we want to spend that money? How could we reach the kids in our community to help them get through this really difficult time? So therefore, we actually sat down, not, not us as council members, but our staff, and sat down and figured out what we could do, how we could implement it. And the school district has amazing statistics that have really helped our, our kids. So I'll let you share those, but I want to read this real quick. And we really do appreciate the collaboration with the school district and the city. So the San Marcos City Council hereby recognizes mental health awareness and support. Mental health is essential to the overall well-being of individuals, families, and communities. And raising awareness about mental health is crucial for fostering understanding, reducing stigma, and encouraging those in need to seek help. The Let's Face It Together, that's what the program's called, supported by the San Marcos Unified School District and the city, is dedicated to providing vital mental health support for youth and teens, connecting them with appropriate services to improve their mental health and quality of life. Today's digital and social challenges, exasperated by a global pandemic, have intensified the mental and emotional toll on the students, making the transition from childhood to adolescence particularly difficult and highlighting the increased need for support. The Let's Face It Together program works to dismantle the stigma surrounding mental health, encouraging open conversations, and ensuring that those suffering in silence feel empowered to reach out for help, addressing common struggles such as academic and social pressure, anxiety, depression, and family instability. We, the City Council of the City of San Marcos, do hereby express our full support for Let's Face It Together program and commit to fostering healthy, stigma-free environment for all residents, ensuring that mental health remains a priority in our community. So did one of you want to say a few words? Yes, come on. Yes, come on. If you don't volunteer, you get voluntold, so we don't want that. Anyway, thank you so much. I'll give that to you.
Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
We do have a brief presentation prepared, but we also want to echo what your words were, Mayor. We are so grateful, so grateful, for the partnership of our city council to come together with us as a school district to really address this pressing need that we saw out of the pandemic. So, once again, we just want to extend our gratitude for your support and your collaboration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Appreciate you. Well, let's give them a hand. If you want to say a few words, you can. What do you want to do?
Is this where we do our slides? They'd ask us to get photos or something?
Yeah, well, we could do, how about we do this? Let's do a quick picture and then do the slide presentation.
Okay.
That's good. Don't worry, we're gonna play it, don't worry. We want to see all the statistics.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One more, hold on.
Is that one or two? Oh, no, that's a clicker.
One, two, three.
Okay. So, I would suggest you guys go there, we'll go and sit down.
Yes.
Yep, okay. And I was gonna say, for the first time, I would remember to actually...
So, once again, thank you so much for allowing us to give you just a brief update on kind of some of the statistics surrounding the Let's Face It Together campaign. So, the impact thus far this year, one of the layers of the Let's Face It Together team is our wellness team, and the wellness team is comprised of 12 people. So far this year, 724 home visits, many of those are, they have been out to the same home more than once, because families that are in need or have a student in crisis need more than just one visit. Over 1,000 consultations with families and students, 34 tabling events across all of our schools, and then different community events as well. Some of the data that's not up on this slide is also the crisis text line, where we've had approximately 100 different texts this year of students reaching out for that confidential support 24/7. And what we found as well is, why we put that in place was for students to reach out for help. What students told us is oftentimes, they were using the text line to help their friends. So when a friend came to them who was in crisis, they wanted to know the right steps to take, so they started using the crisis text line to then guide their friends to the appropriate resources. So it actually became an even greater resource than we initially anticipated.
Great, and thank you again, Mayor, city council, city leaders. I'm Amy Ventatulo, Public Information Officer. I want to share a brief update with you about the communications behind the program. So as you know, we worked very closely with JPW Communications to bring this award-winning program and campaign to life, as well as our students. Our students definitely had a hand in shaping this campaign. And one of the things that we did when we launched and as we continued to message was employ a variety of communications tactics for this campaign. So those include graphics and messaging in and across all of our school campuses. You can see an example there on the slide. A lot of education and outreach from our wellness teams on our school campuses to reach our students about the program and about how important it is to take care of yourself and your mental health. And you can see they went to our elementary schools, to our littles, as well as our bigs in our high schools. We have staff t-shirts, really, again, another way to enforce the campaign and get the message out. Email was a big component of the campaign as well when we launched, and as we continued to remind folks that we have these resources available, primarily during times of breaks, when we have winter break, spring break, summer break. We just sent out a big newsletter about all of the resources that are available for our students, families, and staff throughout the summer. We want to make sure folks know that even though school is out, the support does not end. Social media has also been a huge component of the campaign, as well as a variety of collateral material, a variety of different flyers, brochures, cards, in English and in Spanish. And I have to give a shout out to our student journalists. Our student news crews have been fantastic. They've put together their own news stories, their own PSAs about the program to share with fellow students. So shout out to San Marcos Nights News and Mission Hills One TV. And then, of course, we held a press conference. You may recall, earlier in the school year, in October, on World Mental Health Day, we held a press conference where we had a great turnout of our media partners, print media, as well as broadcast media, in English and in Spanish. And when we looked after the press conference and saw some of the data and analytics of the stories and how many folks they reached, we reached about 230,000 viewers, and that gave us a media publicity value of nearly $30,000. So it was quite a valuable morning. And then, we also wanted to launch the campaign the first year with a video. So we conducted and we worked with students, and we created a video that really shared about the program as a whole. And as we continued on and through the campaign, we realized that we wanted a second video to reinforce the messages, and especially reinforce that we have a crisis text line that's available 24/7 in real time to students, as well as pull out some more student stories. So we really think we did that with the second video that we just recently finalized and wanted to share with you this evening.
Navigating one's mental health on their own is something that is just obscenely hard to do, you know? Well, I think back to my freshman year, my freshman year, I had a lot of stuff going on personally that I couldn't really manage on my own.
When you're stuck in your own head, it's honestly a loop of bad thoughts that you can't really help your way out of without other people's support.
We saw that our students were really struggling, both academically and behaviorally. We recognized that in order for our students to perform academically, we had to take care of their mental health needs first.
Fifteen-year-old child, I always thought asking for help was the hardest thing for me, because I always thought I was never gonna fit in. No one was gonna like me, I was gonna be judged, I was gonna be criticized.
My way of expressing that I was in need of help was to be kind of rebellious and angry and lashout. Reaching out was intimidating for me, because I was misunderstood.
And mental health became super important to our kids. They are incredibly self-aware, and they told us, "We need help." And so I'm super happy that we were able to answer their call.
I think that it's very important that we have something as simple as a text line for students for starting with mental health. Sending a text is easy compared to, you know, what may be going through a multiple-step process to seek the help that a student actually needs.
I think about the student who was alone and in crisis, and instead of keeping it to themselves, talked to someone, because they saw Let's Face It Together.
We are able to voice our concerns with our mental health, and we can get the help that we need.
I feel the Let's Face It Together campaign has literally saved lives.
No matter what race we are, no matter what color we are, no matter how, what your blue eyes are, we are never alone, and I am thankful for this Let's Face It program, because it shows us that we are not alone.
And so just... Just to echo Dr. Campbell's thoughts in the video, we know this program has saved lives, and it would not have been possible without the generous contribution of the city, so we thank you and for the partnership with the city. Our students have told us they have people they can count on, they know where their resources are, and we are going to continue the work. And this will be launching in August, when students, you were the first to see it, this was the debut. So we will be, when students come back in August, they will all be viewing this video as well, just to kind of reboot the program for the new school year.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council or discussion?
No questions, just a great job. You're working, you're truly working miracles in the community, and I'm glad that we're able to collaborate with you on that and keep up the good work.
Yeah, some of the faces in the video are familiar to us, and you can really see the change in their life. It's very, very heartening and very positive. Thank you.
Definitely.
Yes, I have a question. So, I believe the grant funds run out before the end of this year, so how are you going to be able to continue it?
So the district has, well, we will have to downsize the wellness team itself, the actual physical teams. We are going to maintain those, the district is going to maintain half of the teams. And then in addition, we are strategically making sure that the crisis text line is going to be highlighted more as well, and then we're doing more training with our social workers, counselors, and site staff, so that they can continue to be those trusted adults and know where to direct students for those resources.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, all right, well, did you have something?
Yes, I do have a follow-up question. Thank you for being here and for providing this update. It sounds like it's been a very successful program and collaboration. I actually had the same question that the deputy mayor did about the funding and what the program will look like in terms, because of the limited funds that were, that might be available. So, what I was thinking, is there room? Are we exploring collaboration with some of our health partners that are in the area, in the community? Are they able to contribute? Is that a possibility?
I think that's definitely something we can look into. What we've been currently doing is looking at any grant opportunities, but we can definitely look into our health partners as well to see if that's something, because oftentimes, they get grants that maybe we didn't see as a school district. So thank you for that idea.
Okay, no, thank you for being here and for the work.
Okay, deputy mayor, you had something else?
I just have one more question, probably for staff. This all came out of COVID or ARPA or one of those pots of money that we received. What was the, do you have a total amount of what we contributed for this program, approximately?
Yes, it was approximately $3 million, and it was from our ARPA funding. So, the city kept the ARPA funding that was permitted to remain within city coffers, and then we used the remaining ARPA funding to try to pour back into the community, and this was one of the areas that we put the additional funding into. And I'm gonna look at Donna for thumbs up, thumbs down. I got it, $3 million? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, and thank you for sharing some of the statistics. And, you know, as council member Musgrove said, you know, there were students in there that, you know, we all probably have met, and just really seeing the change in their lives, and seeing them definitely better off on this side of it is really very rewarding for us to know as a city that we've done something good. I know a lot of times, people say, "Oh, you're the government, and you're here to help," and they kind of laugh at it. I think when, you know, when we can see results like this, it definitely is something we definitely want to continue doing, so thank you for your work in it. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, moving on. Oh, this is exciting. Okay, NCTD Plus, I think we have Chris Orlando here, and some of his, some other folks. Let's see, who do we have here today? Oh, thank you, Nick Sofel. And we just did the ribbon cutting, and this is a long time coming, so we're really excited to hear everything. And where everyone can go and get all the information, today, I actually downloaded the app, and it works fine, got everything in there, so it's really exciting. So go ahead and tell us all about it.
That was great, we weren't expecting applause, so it's a good way to start. Thank you. So we're here to tell you about the new NCTD Plus micro-transit service that we're launching here in San Marcos this week, so, oh, I got the slides right here. So, first, a little bit of an overview. Let me start by saying I'm here with Nick Sofel. Nick is our Strategic Planning Director. He has been the project lead on this project, so he's here with me today. So first, what is micro-transit? So, micro-transit is an app-based service that provides point-to-point rides within a defined geographic zone. And so, much like you find with ride shares, this is a similar version to that, but it's a version that NCTD is implementing here in San Marcos. So, how did we go about this implementation? So, micro-transit has a number of use cases. Hard-to-serve areas by fixed route, areas where you need connectivity to transit services like the Sprinter, or areas where there's limited infrastructure for sidewalks and bikes and those sorts of things. So, those are all good places where micro-transit can be implemented. As NCTD looked at implementation of micro-transit, we actually studied 14 different zones within our service area for their suitability for micro-transit. We selected four zones out of those 14, and of those four, San Marcos is the very first zone that we are launching. And as I said, we launched it yesterday. So, we will launch the four zones. Each will have a 12-month pilot program. San Marcos launched yesterday, we will launch Vista next April, Fallbrook October after that, and then Oceanside in April of 2026. During those 12-month periods, we'll do evaluation of the services, see how they are operating. We'll get learnings from those that are riding it, take feedback, and make sure that the service is working for the community. And we'll also explore partnerships for funding, for continuing the service. So now I'll turn it over to Nick, and Nick will describe how the service will work in San Marcos.
Thank you, Chris. So when we first identified San Marcos as the number-one, most suitable area for micro-transit implementation in North County, we started off with a service area of 6.2 square miles. But then, through a collaborative process with residents from San Marcos who actually came to our board meetings at NCTD, we actually identified that there were opportunities for a little bit of expansion and to include some manufactured mobile home communities, many of which are 55-plus and senior housing developments, some new townhomes, as well as some recreational uses, you know, Lake San Marcos in particular, that wasn't included in the original zone. So with that input, we went ahead and expanded the zone nearly 50% to just under 10 square miles. The daily service will operate between 6:00 AM and 9:00 PM, seven days a week. That's designed to make sure that there's a stable service and a very wide span so that students who are at Palomar College and CSUSM could actually use this service daily to be able to get to and from classes, you know, as well as other activities through the city. The service has an unaccompanied minors policy of 13-plus. So this is consistent with our other peers to our north in Orange County. They write a system, they run a system called OC Flex, and in Los Angeles as well with Metro Micro. All those services have a minimum age for unoccupied minors of 13 and up. There are set fares with the service, so even though it operates a little bit like a TNC, like Uber and Lyft, there's no surge pricing, there's no tipping onboard, which makes that convenient for everyone. And there's gonna be drop-off and pickup locations across the city. It was mentioned earlier today, we serve over 78 BREE stops, our four Sprinter stations, as well as many other stops that are sited at individual shopping centers and points of interest across the city. This is the final map of the San Marcos district for micro-transit. You can kind of point out there, the four Sprinter stations at Palomar College, Civic Center, CSUSM, and Norl Road. We got the core of the city in here, so you have Kaiser Health, the new medical center in here. You have City Hall, Library, Boys and Girls Club, DMV, very wide variety of uses, and it's really the core and the heart of the city in the district. So first, we want to show just how easy it is to book a trip on NCTD Plus, and since you've already downloaded the app, Mayor, you know yourself...
I didn't take a ride yet, but I did download the app. It was very easy. And you can set your work and also your home as, yeah, so it's really easy.
You can save those locations. So, first step, download the NCTD Plus app for free in the Google Store or as well as the Apple App Store. You can create your profile. Only three pieces of information needed to create that profile, your name, your email address, and phone number, and you're ready to go. So I'm gonna show, demonstrate right here on a quick little video. We go through what you would do once you have an account to, let's say you want to book a trip from Palomar College Sprinter Station to, right here, at City Hall. You would go ahead and you would enter in your origin and your destination in the NCTD Plus app. One thing you'll notice is that you do not need the actual street address. It has smart intelligence behind it, so you can just type in San Marcos City Hall, it figures out the address for you. So if you don't know one Civic Center, you're taken care of. Same thing, if you wanted to go to Winco, for instance, you can do the same thing. You type in any location in the city, it's gonna come up with the address. You verify and confirm your starting point, and you're off to go. It gives you your fare, so this fare would be $2.50 for one rider. You confirm, immediately comes up and gives you when your pickup window is and your drop-off location. You can confirm and request it, and then once you hit that confirm, it's gonna actually match you with the closest ride time to your available. You'll see the text message kind of popped up right there, so it gives you a text message alert, actually, the second your trip is confirmed, and you're off to go. And at that point, you are fully confirmed for pickup, you have your drop-off time, and if for some reason you needed to add an accessibility device, and you needed to make sure you told the driver you needed a wheelchair, that's also available for you to add that to your booking. And then from there, you can actually watch the vehicle in real time, come to your pickup location, and then begin your ride.
I have a quick question about it right now.
Go for it.
Eight people, you and your friends want to go somewhere. You want to go to, let's say you're 14 years old, and you and seven of your friends want to get to Draft Republic and play in the bowling alley. and play in the bowling alley, play some game of bowling or so. Maybe a few. How do you, it's cheaper by the person, correct?
Yes.
If you have, all of you booked on one.
Correct. So in the fare structure, you have, it's $2.50 if you're going to or from Sprinter. And that's important because that $2.50 is equivalent to what a bus fare would be. So we want to make sure that we're prioritizing folks who are going to and from our existing transit system. You can go anywhere in the transit zone within the city of San Marcos for $5 for the first person, but every additional person is half that price. So you're absolutely correct. Each additional person on the reservation is only $2.50. And then, not on this slide, but very important, is minors five and below ride free always on NCTD, not just on this service, but all of our services. Then finally, our fleet. We have a fabulous fleet of 10 Ford Transit vans, eight passengers per van. Each van is 100% ADA compliant, has wheelchair capabilities on these vehicles. This is really important to ensuring that everyone who, regardless of their mobility needs, is gonna have the same experience and not experience any higher wait times because they need a wheelchair-accessible vehicle. So it's really key for ensuring access and mobility across the city. And these vehicles all have beautiful, brand-new branding. It's really designed for you to kind of turn your head. You're gonna see these vehicles on the road. People are gonna see these smiling faces on the side of the bus and say, what was that? It's NCTD Plus. And with that, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Chris to wrap it up with marketing.
So we've already begun, thanks, Nick. We've already begun aggressively marketing this new service. We mailed postcards to every house in San Marcos, so to make sure they were aware. We've done social media, pop-up events at both Cal State and Palomar College. And we also held a launch press conference today at the San Marcos Farmer's Market. Thank you to the mayor and the deputy mayor and the city council for joining us to help us kick off the new service. So we'll be aggressively marketing the program to make sure there's broad adoption of the new service. And then the future. So as I noted, these are pilot programs for 12 months. So our continuation of each of the zones in each of the pilot programs requires us identifying future funding for the programs. Currently, these pilot programs are funded through NCTD's operating budget. But to continue the programs in the cities beyond the pilot program, we need to work with the cities to identify future funding. That could be participation from cities or other groups, or it could be through grant, you know, going to see grant funding together with the cities. But the goal will be, you know, to gain adoption of the program and then to find funding to continue it into the future. So with that, Nick and I will take questions.
Thank you. One other thing that I'd like to mention, and we spoke about this earlier, but just for folks out in the public, and then also for city staff, I think we have a tremendous opportunity for the kids that are playing in travel soccer and, you know, the sports. It's really hard sometimes, when you have more than one child, especially if you need to get one picked up, and you're like, shoot, what am I going to do? Over 13, you've got an answer right here. And it runs till 9 o'clock at night, which is great because you can make sure that you get them home, do all the things that you need to do. I'm super excited about that. I mean, I honestly can't contain myself because, you know, it's been so long coming that I've been talking about this. I know this is gonna happen someday, but to actually see it, you know, moving forward. And we took a ride on the little, on one of them today. It was a very comfortable, very polite driver. I think it's going to be a huge success. But back to the point, it being a pilot project, we need to make sure it's going to be successful. And for it to be successful, that means everyone needs to try to use it as much as possible. You know, you need to get somewhere and, you know, you don't feel like taking your car. I mean, one time my garage broke, and I couldn't get, I couldn't get my car out. You know, the garage door thing snapped, and I was like, shoot, how am I gonna get where I need to go? So this would be, you know, a lot of different reasons you could use it in a pinch, and it really would be very helpful. So any other questions or comments? Yes, councilmember?
Standard rules apply, Chris, as far as no pets, but service animals, as long as it's a manageable size?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councilmember?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. No questions, just wanted to also share my excitement and echo some of the mayor's comments. And I really think the sweet spot for this is going to be with seniors and with students. Seniors going to doctor's appointments, or the grocery store, the pharmacy, and then students, of course, going to school. I think that's really where, this is really gonna bring a big benefit to our residents. I do, I do think it also provides, like the mayor said, some emergency options if a family has, you know, unexpected car problems, and they need to get their kids to high school, or whatever it might be. And same thing with if they, you know, work, work, you know, we all know that, right? Sometimes you gotta stay late, sometimes you gotta go in early, and you don't always have time to plan for that. And so I think that's gonna be a great tool for our families as well. I was really impressed today when we, when we did the ribbon cutting, and we took a little drive in it, how spacious, how clean. I was sitting next to Chris during that drive, and he was showing me the app and how it works. It's very user-friendly. It's probably even more user-friendly than I think our traditional, like Uber and Lyft apps. So I think everybody will be able to use it, and it's just gonna be a really great, I'll call it a resource for our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
And more affordable than Uber, for sure. Deputy mayor?
A question for you. So what happens if you're on the app, you're not sure if where you want to go is in the zone? Or you're not sure if you're in the zone? Will, will the resident...
Absolutely, so...
Get kicked out, or what happens?
No, no. When, when you're typing, this was actually a change. We asked our software company to actually help to make, to make that very clear to customers that they're not in the zone. So when you type in your address in that screen where you gotta put in your origin and your destination, if it's not in the zone, you'll actually see a red message right underneath it that says, "Address is not in zone. Please adjust address to continue trip." And so it lets you know right off the bat, and you can go ahead and make that adjustment and be off to go.
Okay.
Deputy mayor, we're both in the zone.
Well, I'm looking at this map.
We're in the zone.
And then I just want to make a comment that I made today. The staff has done an amazing job over the last few years, working to get this off the ground. And I just want to commend both of you and all of you, because it's been an amazing effort. And our new CEO, Chris, I'm sorry, Sean, is in the audience, and he did it within three months. He got it going. So thank you, Sean. No, you guys did all the work, so. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Noonan, yes?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for being here. This is really exciting for our residents. And just a couple of quick questions. One, is the app available in multiple languages?
Yes, yes. Spanish language is provided native in the app. So if your phone is set to Spanish language, the app will automatically show up in that user environment in Spanish.
Okay, great. And I did have a couple of residents that were wanting to use the service today. They weren't able to download the app to the phone, but we were informed that they can call to schedule. So what does that look like? When somebody calls, are they able to talk to somebody in multiple languages, or?
Yes, absolutely. We have a reservation call center that's available through the entire service span for operations, so from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And that includes support in multiple languages. Those folks are trained to be reservationists. They actually do reservations as well for our pair transit network called Lyft. And so they're very knowledgeable on how to book trips, and they've all been cross-trained in NCTD Plus.
Okay, thank you for that. And I'm glad you mentioned Lyft. I did receive a couple of questions today about the possibility of hopefully offering reduced rates for our disabled, or maybe for our elderly folks. Is that a possibility, or no?
So the pricing and the rate structure of this actually matches the Lyft rates, so that service. And so that service is considered a premium service, so those are already discounted against the actual cost of the service?
Okay, thank you for that, because I know, I think we're gonna continue to get those questions as...
But the vehicles are accessible, so you can bring a wheelchair on the vehicle, so you don't have to book the ADA trip through Lyft. You could book this service with an ADA accessible vehicle, so a wheelchair or type device.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for being here today.
And Chris, one other thing that actually reminded me of something, when we were talking earlier about the youth opportunity passes, this is not eligible for that, but the actual part of the NCTD Plus. But if someone wants to use that to get to the bus or the Sprinter or something like that, then those would be available for the youth opportunity passes, correct?
Yeah, that's right. So it would be $2.50 to get to a Sprinter station, and then if you had the youth opportunity pass, free to ride the Sprinter from there.
Right. Okay, perfect. All right. Thank you so much. Any other questions? No. All right. Well, let's go get it and make it successful.
And thank you to the city council. The mayor's been a long supporter of the service. Deputy mayor serves on our board and an advocate for the service. And the city staff was fantastic as we worked to refine the zone to make sure it met the needs of the community. So thank you for the support, the city.
Thank you. Thank you. And of course, we know our staff is amazing. We love them very much.
And thank you for picking us for...
Yes.
Not sure.
Well, they would have to contend with you and I, so maybe that's why. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. I'm going to pull item number nine with some clarification. Are there any other items that any councilmembers wish to pull?
Yes, I would like to pull item number 10. And can I go ahead and suggest now, Helen? Or do we, to defer it until our next meeting on June 25th, or do we need to do that later?
No, you can suggest it now.
Okay. So I'm pulling item number 10, and I'm going to suggest that we defer that until June 25th.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the remainder?
Move to approve the balance.
Sorry about that. I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes? Okay. Everything but items nine and 10. So I wanted to provide a little bit of clarification on item number nine. I had a community member, Shane Harris, from, he's the founder and president of the People's Association of Justice Advocates. And he had actually contacted me and talked a little bit about affordable housing and the issues that many of our foster youth are, and by the way, we do have speakers on this, this item as well. But the, some of the issues that our foster youth are facing, because a lot of times, and I think it's upwards of 60%, that many of our foster youth, once they actually are out of the system of foster care, that they become victims of human trafficking because of the high expense of housing, especially here in San Diego County. But overall, even outside of San Diego County or California, they do face the same thing. Because housing is so expensive, many times someone offers them a place to live, it's cheaper, maybe they don't have to pay rent. But they are really exposed to human trafficking very often. And so we sat down, talked a little bit about it. So that's kind of the reasoning for this concept of the foster youth preference. We actually had a, one of our affordable housing developments, the developer had, you know, I had discussed this with him. I said, is it something that you can do? And this funding is very specialty funding. It's through the county of San Diego. But it is, it offers kids that age out of the system, they're called actually transitional aged youth. They actually, all the way up until 26 years old, they actually are offered this supplemental, and a lot of them don't actually know about it, but the supplemental monies that help them with their rent and that sort of thing. So a lot of times, they need all of these different help, because they don't have the family support system that many of us do. And so this, I think, is a way, and it's not saying they're first on the list, and they're going to, you know, get into a space no matter what, but it's to try to work with developers, this resolution, to work with developers to say, hey, we know there's a need. Can you set aside maybe a few units, you know, where you can secure the funding and make sure that they're successful in life? Because at the end, we want them to be successful. We don't want the fact that they are in a foster care system for any reason, for that to be a hindrance of their success in life. We want them to win. We want them to feel valued. And so that's basically the background on this. But we do have, I think it's nine public speakers, so I will start going through those real quick. First up, we have Georgina, wait, is that right? Hold on. Sorry, I gotta get my glasses back on. Okay, that I'm not entirely sure. I think it is. But Elise James, followed by Kathy Carpe, and then it will be Z King to start with. So Elise, James, come on down, please. Elise, you're with Casa de Amparo, and so are you, Kathy.
Yes.
Yes.
We're actually all representatives of Casa de Amparo.
And we have, and we have a cute little guy with us today. Wait, is he gonna speak? He gets to go first. No, I'm just kidding.
He's been waiting.
Aw, that's so cute.
Yes. So Mayor Jones and city council, we just wanted to show our support for this resolution. As the CEO of Casa de Amparo, I've seen firsthand the need for our former foster youth, who, you are correct, 40 to 50% of former foster youth become homeless. And then 65% after emancipating, they need immediate housing once they exit the system. So many years ago, in 2008, we opened up our New Directions Program. The government put out an RFP, and we answered that RFP. And the federal government understood that many of our former foster youth were a large part of the homeless population. So just wanted to show our support of this resolution. And we appreciate the city's recognition of this issue. There's been other cities that have been successful in creating partnerships with those that provide services for former foster youth. So thank you so much.
Hi, everyone. I'm Elise James. I'm the director from Casa de Amparo's New Directions Program, and that's our specific program that works with young people who've aged out of the foster care system, 18 through 25. So I just want to give you guys a really quick overview of kind of what we do, to give you guys some more information, and I'll pass it on to Z. So all of our participants have faced trauma and come to us with various and differing barriers to their success. Many have very limited or no family support at all. We're currently serving 50 participants and five of their children who benefit from our services. We hold 31 corporate leases across North County, providing one or two-bedroom apartments to our young people. And partnerships with complexes are imperative for us to even exist. So that's why we really support this resolution, in order to get more partnerships, to get connections with leases, so our young people can be successful once they leave us. Our dedicated case managers, whom we refer to as advocates, work closely with participants to address their unique needs and provide personalized life skills training. Beyond providing housing and weekly case management, we offer a food pantry, support funds, access to therapy, and monthly life skills groups, while learning to thrive in an apartment community. Our goal is to empower and prepare our young people for independent living beyond our program. We believe in their strength and potential. We're actively seeking growth opportunities. Our vision includes establishing more units in San Marcos, specifically to be close to Cal State San Marcos, Palomar College, for our students. By expanding, we aim to reach more young people and provide essential support to this vulnerable population. In a world where living costs rise, New Directions plays a crucial role in supporting our young community members. Together, we can build a foundation for their future success and help break and change the all-too-common path to homelessness for former foster youth. I want to thank you for your support, having us here today, and have the pleasure to introduce you to one of our former participants, Z King.
Welcome, Z. And all of your patience and your two sweet kids, thank you for coming this evening.
We came over from literally right after school, so they're a little rowdy. I apologize.
Oh, they're great.
So obviously, my name is Z. I use they/them pronouns. As Elise stated, I am a graduate of their transitional housing program, which is New Directions. I joined in 2015, before my little ones. But a little background about me, I am eight years in recovery, four years sober. I obviously have two small children. I'm a single parent, and I'm a resident of San Marcos. I currently do hold an affordable housing unit. However, I did not receive that through transition. I need you to stop. Thank you. Sorry. I do come from a background of human trafficking myself, in addition to a lot of other traumas that I've had to navigate through, both before being a parent and after. My housing instability without the supportive transition into affordable housing is also what causes the regression of my continued safety, my children's continued safety, as far as housing stability goes. You know, it's, sorry, the more I try to calm them down...
They're being great. No, just, you're doing great.
Without parents and familial support, we end up on the street quite often. I have been unhoused 11 times. I'm 28, so there is no more transition age support for me. I got myself the unit that I got, but I want to highlight that chronic homelessness starts with people like me. After you transition from being a transition age youth, and there not being support to set you up into an affordable unit, you kind of continue back into old patterns to get you situated. You know, you go back to... you situated, you know, you go back to using to deal with your mental health, or in my case, living in my car with my children, which means I lose access to other things, like being able to work and become a productive member of society. Thankfully, I stayed connected to New Directions, so although they aren't able to support me beyond, you know, like financial stability, they're really big members of my kiddos' lives. But that does so much more damage than I think people realize, without housing and affordable, like partnerships between things like Casa de Amparo and affordable housing units. We don't go to school because we're so focused on working, so we can't get higher education. We don't get higher education, we can't get jobs. I have fought tooth and nail to be able to become a case manager, to speak at things like this, or to show those after me that you can do it without following the standards that everybody else has. But that's really hard to do when there aren't partnerships between these programs and affordable housing units. And of course, it's not to say that we go first, but if we talk about homelessness as a whole, it becomes chronic when we don't step in at points like this. Yeah.
Thank you so much for sharing, really, a beautiful success story, and I, I personally really appreciate it. And, you know, thank you to all three of you for coming. And I do have a quick question. I had gone to New Directions, I want to say six or seven years ago, are you still in Oceanside or Casa de Amparo's here in the city, but are you still, New Directions is in Oceanside still?
Yes.
Okay.
They're on the other side now, though.
Okay, okay.
That's our, that's our office, we have an office in Oceanside, but we rent apartments throughout North County.
Right.
And we pay market rents for those apartments.
Wow, okay, all right.
Lifeline is the only transitional housing program right now that's partnered with an affordable housing complex, which is the Vista Village one right across from the transit.
Okay, all right, well, thank you so much, and I'm glad you're a resident here, with these cute little kids growing up in our community. And I don't know how she's so brave, because honestly, I would have been hiding at her age.
You know, she likes the lights, and there's a lot of people, so she's like...
Aw, thank you so much for sharing, appreciate it. Okay. Okay, next speaker is Barbara Solier, followed by Kathy Steele, and then Paul Mendoza.
I'm Barbara Solier, I'm a resident of District 3. Mayor, council members and staff, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. It's widely acknowledged that foster youth are transitioning out of care with very little help. It's been known for a long time, it happens throughout the state. It's a tragedy what happens to them, and they do end up a lot homelessness. Upon reading the resolution, I was excited to discover that San Marcos has now expanded its housing plan that foster youth in top priority. However, I wanted to know more, so I went and looked online to see what there was, and we do not have a major housing plan. And I'm not sure how this got pushed to the top, other than what you told me. I wanted to know what our list was. I looked through the 2023-24 Annual Action Plan for the U.S. Department of Housing for San Marcos, and there's no mention in there other than Casa de Amparo. I returned to the staff report, I noticed that you, the mayor, had introduced it, you just explained why. I didn't know why, I didn't go through the normal procedures of going through committees and all of that kind of vetting, which was surprising to me that it didn't. Usually, it seems to me they go through a committee and we get moved on. I don't think anyone in this room is against foster housing, I don't think that's the issue. My issue at this point in time is San Marcos is currently experiencing a housing crisis that has existed for some time. I've observed people in this chamber, and when watching online, numerous discussions by various groups, from seniors to low-income people, families who basically have been displaced from this city for lack of housing. Council members have expressed the necessity for a unified, all-encompassing housing plan, the need for such a plan's apparent, emphasizing the importance of addressing this big issue. As a trustee of the, of a county board, I've participated in strategic plans and master plans that prioritize management of our scarce real estate assets. These plans gather insight from communities, residents, businesses, higher education institutions, and others to establish goals, guidelines, supervision, reporting, and execution. Master plans are similar to a jigsaw puzzle, as far as I'm concerned. In order to get all the pieces to fit together, you have to look at each separate entity, not one at a time. If you look at it one at a time, they're never going to go together, and you're going to have this huge hodgepodge. And to me, that's kind of what this resolution is representing, one of those puzzle pieces without looking at all of them. I support housing for foster youth and for tradition, transitioning out, but I oppose pulling out one sector over another without a big master plan. I urged the mayor, the council, to develop a unified, thorough, all-encompassing housing plan with the input, input of various sectors within the city, businesses, residents, seniors, families. It should address all needs, not just one at a time. It should set established priorities, implement standards, rather than proceeding in a fragmented manner. Planning and a master plan is crucial now.
Hi, Kathy.
Hello.
One thing I would like to say quickly is that the city doesn't actually own the affordable housing, it's owned by private development. So Kathy, feel free to go ahead.
Okay, hi.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, thanks for, for hearing me tonight. Unfortunately, I forgot my glasses, so I'm going to struggle through this.
I feel your pain.
I am here tonight to speak on, on, I'm sorry, on Agenda Item 9, the, brother, the resolution to support housing opportunities for transition age foster youth. While I applaud your efforts in this very important issue, there is a need that is far more pressing. That is the need for a comprehensive plan to address the lack of affordable housing in San Marcos. A study, oh my gosh, a study by the San Diego and Imperial Center of Excellence, oh my gosh, assigned metric points that measure needs to each zip code in the top 50 zip codes list with the most need in San Diego County. San Marcos, zip code 92078, in the central area around San Marcos Elementary in District 1, qualified with 15 out of 16 needs not being met. This area in San Marcos was 26 out of 50 in most in-needs communities in San Diego County, out of a total of 180 zip codes. What's concerning most is the lack of affordable housing to constituents who live in this area. Services, oh my gosh, reach, reach disinfested communities only after other more affluent communities take their piece of the pie. With a poverty rate of 9.74% in, in, in this area, it, that disproportionately affects the Latino constituents, it is past time that there, there are further options that, I'm sorry, I am so sorry, further, so, so that we further explore their needs and address the pressure, the pressing need for more affordable housing in San Marcos. It is commendable that over 7% of San Marcos's entire housing stock is, is now affordable, deed-restricted housing, but as we have an almost 10% poverty rate, there are 3% whose need is not being met. I asked that you table Item 9, and you already have, so I don't have to ask that, this resolution to support the foster youth, which is so important, and address it later another time, what, once this issue has been addressed. And I really apologize that I don't have my glasses, because I, I couldn't read very much of this, but thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Georgia. I would like to, I would like to address a couple of your comments. First, I don't think we've done a very good job on our end, giving information, putting it out there, because, well, first of all, San Marcos Elementary is in zip code 92069, so I'm not sure. You mentioned that what you were talking about is in area code, or zip code 92078, that's actually on the other side of the freeway, everything is 92069 by San Marcos Elementary.
Well, that's what I thought, but this report I have says...
I don't know where that, that came from.
That's why I was surprised.
Was that something that we put out? Because, okay.
No, no. If I may, Mayor... This was a different report, and you're welcome to see it.
I'm, I'm sorry, council member.
If I may, Kathy, I believe if, if, if I can tell, you're looking at a list of, these are not zip codes, these are census tracts. No, they're, oh, I see, no, there's a zip code list, too, and it does say 92078, which, which I was surprised about.
Yeah, that's actually totally, that's a, so there are two zip codes in the city, San Marcos Elementary is 92069. I'm sorry, I just was thinking that somehow we provided it. I'm sorry, do you, do you know where this, this came from? Where did you get that report? I don't...
There's census tracts, and we do have, we do have census tracts in the city of San Marcos that are, I believe, below the poverty level.
Well, I guess that would be apples and oranges, and that's not your fault, I, I'm just not sure where you got this. I was thinking you got it from us, and I was thinking, our messaging is terrible. And we actually have 10% of our affordable house, I'm sorry, 10%, 10% of our total housing is, is affordable housing. And I, I just wanted to clear that up, and we actually have the most out of every city in the county of our total housing stock as deed-restricted affordable. I was actually meeting with Supervisor Lawson Reimer this week, and she had mentioned, she said, "I looked up San Marcos, and I was so surprised, and I was so excited that you've done such a great job at affordable housing, because you've done better than any other city." So, I think, you know what, I think I would like for staff, and I'm sure we have your information, to sit down with you and explain a little bit about our affordable housing and clear up some of your confusion on it, if you don't mind.
Well, there is a quote by...
Sorry, could you come up, sorry, could you...
There was a quote by you, actually, where I got that from, that 7% figure, in October of 2023, which was only a few months ago.
Yes, so we actually had updated that, because we didn't have, some of the, we actually had a new affordable housing person come in and update the list, so it actually is 10%. But, but thank you, I, I have said 7% in the past, I definitely know that.
Okay, great, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, next up, so do we have staff that can clarify some of these numbers, since this is an agendized item?
Yes, the, the current number is 10% deed-restricted affordable. The 7% versus 10%, I believe that the crux of the differential is we've included the deed-restricted affordable units that are mobile homes. Previously, we didn't include the mobile homes in the number, however, they are deed-restricted and therefore are eligible to be included, so I think that's where the two numbers come from.
It's categorization, yeah, categorization. They didn't just come out of nowhere. Okay, Paul Mendoza, followed by Greg Armstrong. And then after that will be Georgina Najera.
Hello.
Hi.
City Council, Mayor. So, I am actually a former foster parent, well, I still have the two kids, I adopted two kids out of, out of the foster system, we do our training here in San Marcos. And I know how important the foster housing, or former foster youth housing is for kids coming out of the system. We did a lot of training, and we learned all about the outcomes a lot of the kids have when they come out of the system, and it is very important to make sure they have that, that resource. I will say, though, that I think when I was going through last year, there was, or maybe about a year and a half ago, the general plan meetings were happening, and those are really interesting to go to, because you got to learn a lot about how the, how the city thinks about the next 10, 15, 20 years, and where the growth is going to come from, and, and where the densification is going to come from. And I would like to see more, I would like to see those general plan meetings happen again, because it seems like they, they stopped, and I'm not sure why they stopped, but they were, I felt like the city was going down a really good plan of designing the city and figuring, okay, well, here's where we're going to put our densification, here's where we're going to put the growth, and it seems like those stopped. So I would like to see those come back again, especially when we're talking about housing, because we're trying to make a, now this is proposing to make a change to our housing policy with this, with this plan, and what is the plan? It doesn't seem like there is currently a, a long-term vision at the moment. And I have two more things I want to talk about, one is a sales tax measure, I...
That's not on this item, you'll have to speak during oral communication, sorry.
Okay, all right, I'll submit another slip. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Greg Armstrong, followed by Georgina Najera. Oh, you're not, oh, okay, all right, Georgina.
Buenas tardes a todo el consejo. Good afternoon to all the council.
Mi nombre es Georgina Najera, y soy un líder comunitario, y doy mi, soy voluntario en Universidad Popular.
I am Georgina Najera, and I'm representing the Universidad Popular, y también es que...
Un líder comunitario.
A community leader.
Me ha gustado, y lo hago con mucho orgullo trabajar para mi comunidad.
I have really enjoyed, and I do it with pleasure, to work with my community.
Yo vengo a hablar de la agenda nueve.
I am speaking on Resolution 9.
De los niños fosters, viviendas foster.
With the housing for foster children.
Pensé que esta era una oportunidad para dar mi opinión también, ya que ustedes agendaron lo que es viviendas.
I also thought of showing up and trying to speak about this resolution, since you mentioned that it was, you know, has to do with housing.
Quiero dejar en claro que no estoy en desacuerdo sobre esta resolución.
I am trying to make it clear that I'm pro this resolution.
Pero sí me gustaría que ustedes tomaran consideración y que pensaran en la demás comunidad, principalmente en el Distrito Uno.
But that you would take in consideration and work at it with, especially with District 1.
Que hay escasez de vivienda.
We lack housing.
Creo que esto sería que pensaran en general, que muchos, muchas familias están pasando por este problema de escasez.
That a lot of families are going through this problem of scarcity in housing.
También por el problema que las rentas son muy altas.
Also that the rental is extremely high.
Sus salarios son muy bajos de esas familias, de esa comunidad, que...
Their salary, especially from that community, is very low.
De esa comunidad descuidada.
It's an undeserved community.
Las listas de espera son muy largas, de mucho, es largo, muy largo el tiempo.
The waiting lists have extremely long time for wait.
Precisamente, los meses, los meses pasados hubo desalojos, parece que ustedes mencionaron que sí había problemas de vivienda, para poder acomodar esas familias en una vivienda digna.
I believe that the last time we were here, or some time ago, we talked about relocation of families and tried to find housing for them.
De hecho, yo me doy cuenta en mi comunidad, porque yo hablo con mi comunidad, vivo en medio de mi comunidad, y yo mismo estoy viviendo los mismos problemas que ellos, estamos estancados. ¿Por qué? Porque no hay vivienda, no podemos tomar la decisión de, oh, hoy me puedo ir a rentar a otro lado donde pueda pagar.
In fact, I live within the community, I speak with my community, and it's very difficult that we're all facing the same problem, and we don't have a chance to just, you know, pick up and have the money to go rent somewhere else.
Entonces, a mí me gustaría que ustedes pensaran en vivienda en general, accesible para, en general, para todos.
So for me, I would like for you to think about general housing for everybody.
Los meses pasados, cuando hubo juntas de, de los desalojos, yo escuché que dijeron, oh, se pueden mover a otro lugar si no pueden encontrar aquí. Quiero que entiendan que muchos, hemos estado aquí por muchos años, hemos pasado... Quiero que entiendan que muchos hemos estado aquí por muchos años, hemos pasado una vida entera aquí, dando por San Marcos, lo vimos transformar. Hemos trabajado para también aportar para la ciudad. No nos pueden pedir eso, si también nosotros tenemos derecho de vivir aquí, tenemos derecho de tener una vivienda digna y que podamos pagar. We as dwellers in San Marcos have also invested our time, our life, our, our work, and we would like in our community to have a better, you know, be better served in the community. We don't deserve to be a lesser community just because, you know, our salaries are low or whatever. We need to have decent housing as well. Hemos sufrido abusos de los mismos arrendadores, abusos. We have suffered abuse from our landlords. De tenernos aceptando arreglos, medios arreglos de las cosas, de los servicios que necesitamos ahí. Also, you know, having lesser services with, with services that we actually need to have there in our community or the buildings. De eso ustedes no se dan cuenta, lo que está sufriendo las comunidades de ingresos bajos. I don't think you're aware of that, of the suffering that the low-income people go or the communities with low income. Algunos están quedando en la calle porque no alcanzan a pagar una renta, porque no les alcanza su salario o su pensión. Some have become homeless because their salary is not enough or their pension is not enough. Es la área, esta área, Distrito Uno. Es la área más descuidada de San Marcos, porque yo he recorrido San Marcos. Hay muchas áreas muy bonitas, muy atendidas, solamente esta área está muy descuidada y no le han puesto atención. It's this area, area or District One, nobody has paid attention to it. Obviously, there's beautiful areas that are just, you know, well taken care of, but area or District One has never really been taken care of. It's, it's just, it's terrible. Creo que también nosotros tenemos derecho a la vivienda digna. I think we also deserve a dignified housing. Como todos. Like everyone. Por eso les pido que tomen consideración, que generalicen la vivienda para todos, que esté accesible para todos, porque todo está muy caro. That's why I'm asking you to take a closer look and to make this happen for everybody. Everything is so expensive, and it's about everybody needing housing. Que no nada más piensen en ciertos grupos, que piensen en todos, que todos merecemos vivir dignamente. That we deserve to live with dignity and that your concern should be for everybody, not just a certain group of people. Eso es todo. And that's it.
Thank you. I think there's a complete, I'm sorry. I am speaking. I have not ever interrupted anyone when they're speaking. I would appreciate the same respect. One of the things that I would like to say is I think there's a complete confusion about what we're doing tonight. We're not talking about not building housing or building housing for a certain segment of our population or not. I remember I had asked for the number, and I'm going to ask staff to get an updated number for us. Back in 2018 in District One, we had spent in excess of, I think it was 160, 165 million dollars specifically for infrastructure and toward affordable housing. So I will ask staff to get an updated number for us on that. What, what tonight's action is, is to, that we're expressing a desired, a desire to reduce transition age youth by partnering with affordable housing developers to identify and support the development of future housing for them as a, as a priority. That doesn't mean that we are putting any money toward these efforts. We don't actually build any housing. The city does not build housing. We actually, it's built by private development. I had mentioned that a little bit earlier. So I just want the, everyone that's out in the public to understand what this action is. Has nothing to do with whether we're leaving part of the community out or whether we're not. And I actually have been low-income before, so I actually do know what that's like. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. We do have one more speaker, and that's going to be Chris Armstrong on this. Yeah, yeah, sure. Go right ahead, council member.
I'm glad this item is actually agendized so we can talk about it a little bit more. I've only been on the council for about a year and a half. But I take a little bit of offense about the last speaker's comments about District One not being represented. I don't think that's fair to Councilwoman Nunez. When I am in District One, I see new fire stations, new schools, new parks. Roads is equal to, are better than anywhere else in the city. I just don't see that, so I want to hear, Councilwoman Nunez, you've been on the council for six years. The speaker said that District One's never been represented. Do you, do you agree with that?
I represent District One also.
I know you do, but, well, then maybe you might want to chime in too, Mayor, because that seems to me that, that seems concerning. Is there something that we should be aware of?
First of all, I think in terms of what was actually said, there's a little bit of misinterpretation with the actual words that were used. As I understood, the comments that were said, and obviously they're, they're part of the, the record, I didn't hear that there was no representation. What I hear is that there are parts of the city, of the district, that are underserved. There are issues with the living conditions in District One, particularly with some of the apartments. And those are issues that have, at least since I've been in the city, those are issues that I have seen, that I have heard of, that continue to be unaddressed. And this is why I also welcome this item and that we can discuss it. And I don't know if we want to go into our actual discussion now. I think we should hear, finish hearing our public comment, and then I also welcome the discussion.
Well, let's stay on topic because let's talk about what the actual discussion is. Because, council member, you just mentioned that the living conditions in District One in apartments are, that they're, they're bad conditions somehow. We, we have no, we, we're not a housing authority. We're not, we, we don't go into private apartments and tell people how they are supposed to be keeping the, the properties. That is outside of our jurisdiction. And so maybe we need to get some clarification from staff. I don't know if Sylvia is here this evening of the appropriate overseeing entity, but it is not the city. We do not go in and tell a private property owner what they, what they're supposed to have the condition of their property is. We don't do that. We, we don't have the resources to do something like that. And that is definitely outside of our lane, which is one of the things that, you know, we keep talking about. What is our lane? Our lane is not going into private property and telling them how they keep their property. We, we don't have any authority over that, so I.
Again, Mayor, I'm happy to go through each individual item out of respect for our public speaker. I think we should finish our public comment.
I'm like shaken up here, so I'd like to give my favor.
Oh, I'm so sorry. No, we don't want to do that to you. I'm sorry. I, at first I didn't even recognize.
I'm actually up here because, okay, my name is Chris Armstrong. And my husband wasn't comfortable reading the statement that we both wrote today because we have both worked with foster kids and foster families as, in our vocation. So he left because he's upset. This shouldn't be a, somebody's getting something and someone isn't getting something. So I'm here to tell you that I'm a resident of San Marcos for over 40 years. I love this community. I have no quarrel regarding this resolution. I just feel that many more residents need the city's assistance to find affordable housing. Is the city planning to provide similar opportunities to seniors, low-income residents, college and university students who want to remain in San Marcos, and also our homeless population? I've been at city council meetings where it was not deemed that the builders had to provide affordable housing as part of their contract. And I welcome your idea to have some of us meet and, and learn more about how we can get more involved in the affordable housing crisis that we have in our community. I heard Jim Desmond on the news today, Supervisor Jim Desmond, say that it's the highest priority in North County right now, is affordable housing. So when you say that it's not your responsibility, I'm talking about it's our, it's our responsibility. And I believe that we should have some kind of a task force that's talking about how we're going to solve some of these housing issues. I'm aware, I believe, if this is wrong, she can tell me this. I believe that our councilperson, Nunez, has asked the council to set up some kind of task force. I think the, the, the housing for foster youth is very important, but so are all of our other members of our, our underhoused people. I'm sorry, I'm really nervous. You made me stand up here. So anyway, I'm just asking us to, to make this a priority for all of us who live and work here. So thank you very much. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, so again, I, I don't know how we got down this road, excuse me. I don't know how we got down this road. We do not build housing. We actually approve a lot of housing, much to the chagrin of many of our residents. People have property rights. We, we do usually, there have been very few projects that we have not approved within my time on the council, and this is my 18th year, so it's, we have approved a lot of housing. I never said it was not our responsibility to provide housing. I don't know where that came from. I said that it's not our responsibility to go into private properties and tell the owners of those properties, because we don't have any authority over that, what, what shape their property is, whether it's deemed to be habitable or not. But we need to stay on the discussion of what we're actually voting on this evening. And there are many discussions that are coming in that are completely outside of what we're talking about today. So anyway, I would, I would, I would ask for a vote on the council unless you have any further discussion about the agenda item only, not about other discussions that are outside of this.
I'll move to approve item nine, Mayor.
Okay, I'll second it. Any other further discussion about this item?
I have some, I have some comments.
Okay, go right ahead. What is that, feedback? I hear a, oh, that was you. Sorry. Yeah, go right ahead, council member.
Thank you, Mayor. I do agree with a lot of the comments that were said today. I do welcome this item on the agenda. It is something that I have been asking for as a body, as a city, to discuss. We have a housing crisis. It's a housing crisis all over the county, all over the state, all over the nation. And it's absolutely a crisis here in the city of San Marcos. Every day I hear about, I see students, I see elderly folks, I see entire families that are either unhoused, they're living out of their car, or they're about to be unhoused. I've heard of students that are living in hotel rooms, entire families. And this is something that's not an isolated incident. This is happening every single day, and it keeps getting worse. And this whole year, since January, since our first meeting that we had as a council for this year, we've had residents coming to us expressing how dire our housing situation is. And as our speaker made perfectly clear, I am not against prioritizing and providing resources, much-needed resources for our foster youth. They are part of our community, and we should help them. We should provide. What I've been asking for from this body is for us to have these dialogues, for us to come up with priorities where we all have a say-so, and we all determine what they should look like, how our resources should be utilized, what are the possibilities, what are the funding resources? What should we do, we be doing as a city to bring those resources, to continue to bring them? So I absolutely agree that we should be comprehensive and strategic in our approach. And the other part that I will say about the comments that have been made with respect to District One, as Georgina mentioned, like, I was not born in District One. I was raised in District One. And for many years, for over 15 years, I have five siblings, or six of us, and we lived in a two-bedroom apartment. And that is the case for a lot of our family members, right, that live in this district. The majority of the district that I represent is comprised of apartments, right, small units. And there's a lot of individuals that live in these cramped spaces. And so for me to hear that there's not a disparity in the districts, it's just not believable. And what I would say to this council is that if none of you have visited some of these units, I know that residents will happily open up their homes so you can see what they look like. Because there is a lot of disparity, and we need to address it. There are also families that are absolutely living in their cars that are unhoused. And that is something that we see every single day. I see it. I hear about it. And once again, what I welcome from this body is to look at what is it that we should be doing? How are we going to streamline so that it's not just the foster youth, as was mentioned, so that we look at our mobile home residents? I disagree that we don't have a responsibility to make sure that our residences are habitable. We have a code enforcement unit that has responsibility. We have a county that absolutely has responsibility. And this is part of what, we've been working with our city staff to make sure that we bring information to our residents to make sure that they are aware, that they know what are the resources that are available. And I think we should absolutely continue that. And so what I would hope to see from this body is absolutely supporting our foster youth, but then also committing to making sure that we do continue the work to support all of the residents. And I do want to make sure that if anybody wants to come to any of these units that are subpart, that we look at him. I know individuals will open up their homes so you can see what's happening inside those units.
Okay, thank you, council member. So back to, yeah, go right ahead, council member.
Can I just comment real fast?
Yes.
And I think, thank you for clarifying that, Councilwoman Nunez. I appreciate it. And it could have been a loss in the translation, but I do view a little bit different between the, the wealth and equities that we, that every city has and the comment about being underserved. In my opinion, being served by the city or the county or the state, at least here in San Marcos, when I go, when I'm in District One, I see a lot of investment in that, that part of our town. And so if that's not what they meant when they said that they were underserved, and you're talking more, more on the private housing apartments that they're living in, I understand and I appreciate that, that correction.
Okay, I, I just wanted for clarification. We're not, we're not voting on anything but the resolution that's in front of us. There's nothing else on the agenda. And I, I did ask staff to give us an update on what we have spent, the resources we have spent in item, or in District One. I, I know that during my time on the council, which I think this is pretty intentional, so out of 3,300 units, we've spent, or we have actually built, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,000 to 1,200 deed-restricted affordable units in District One that I have literally approved. So, and, and we can, we can get those numbers. I know it's a lot. I know there's been a lot since 2007 during my time on the council. We'll get that number for you. Again, you know, back to private property, that's not our job. That is not something that we can get into. However, we do have an item coming up on the agenda today, which is our budget. And if you think that we should take resources from something else, then you can go right ahead and propose that. You know, we have limited resources. We are feeling the crunch. Affordable housing, by the way, does not pay any property taxes. So all of the things that we are doing for those proj, or for the, for those properties as far as police protection, pothole repairs and all of that, I want you to be reminded that we are actually subsidizing that from all of the property tax that we do get throughout the city that is supposed to pay for all of our different things in the community. I just want to bring that to your attention because I think it's the right thing to do, and I'm, I happily think that we should be doing that, but also I want you to recognize that that is already happening, and we are doing a lot for affordable housing. I don't know how we got into this situation where it's us versus them. It's we. It's we, we are San Marcos, all of us live in this community, all of us wanna look out for one another. And I, I, I know that in my time on the council, until 2018, we never had districts. Everyone looked out for every part of this community. I don't like the divisiveness of talking about my district versus your district. It's divisive. I represent everyone, I'm elected at large, but even if I wasn't elected at large, if I was in, in District Three, I, I actually am, uh, in, uh, Deputy Mayor Jenkins District, District Three. I care about every citizen this, in this city. And, and to say that, or to act like it's, it's other than that, I, I just, I do find that offensive myself. I care about everyone, whether I have, uh, just, you know, I, I, they're not my district, I, I would care. But for me, I am, I am elected at large, so I, um, everything that, every, every decision that each one of us makes, whether you're in District One, Two, Three, or Four, it affects every part of the community. And so I, I would like more of a feeling of collaboration, and we're all working together because we are a team. We need to have one another's backs, and we need to not buy into the notion that if, if someone feels like they're being left out, I wanna know about it because I'm representing them as well. And I know that each one of us up here cares about this community. And so, um, I, you know, as, as far as, uh, someone inviting me into their home, and, you know, for me to say, "Well, your landlord's not a good landlord", I don't, I don't know that that is something that, um, you know, we can get involved in. Maybe we can help them, uh, set them up with, and I, I know you're an attorney, but maybe we could set them up with, uh, Legal Aid Society or something, because we do spend money on CDBG, our, our CDBG funds to help folks that have housing issues. But as a city, we don't get involved in that, we need to stay in our lane. I've said it a million times, uh, in my 17 and a half years on the council. We have certain things that we can control and certain things that we can't. And, uh, you know, I think we need to just make sure that our resources, as they are limited, we're spending them on represent, or, um, helping everyone in the community and doing the most that we possibly can. So, um, we have a motion and a second, let's vote on this, uh, agenda item number nine. All in favor? Aye. Any noes?
No for me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to our, uh, first oral communications. We have, uh, four speakers, I'm sorry, three speakers. We have 15 minutes, um, so if we do a little less time, um, Marlene Walder is going to be first, followed by Cisco Martinez Mon, I'm sorry, Santan, Santana Montez, uh, followed by Alan Geraci. You've got five minutes, Marlene. Not, and it doesn't start when you're walking up, by the way.
Council members, mayor, um, staff. I, the, I came by a completely different subject, but an old one, and that's parking. I drove by, uh, near Sycamore, there's the apartment houses that were built in the eighties. It used to be San Marcos, I believe it's now Vista, it was incorporated back when I, um, lived over there. That apartment house was built, had two parking spaces per unit at the time. The, I drove by there the other day, and there wasn't one parking space on either side of the road, which one side is the freeway, and the other side's the apartment houses. That road is just an access road, uh, for that. Every single space was occupied, there's no extra spaces in the apartment house. Now on Barham, where I am, with the new housing that went in, and now the housing that's being built, they don't have enough guest parking, and they're parking on the street already. When you go to Winco, the apartments that are by Winco, I see people walking to Winco and parking their car. And then, um, there is the, uh, situation in our mobile home park. Every mobile home had two parking spaces. When I moved there 37 years ago, the people did not have two cars necessarily, but they did have two parking spaces, because most of them were retired and not working. Now a younger group has moved in, they're working, they have trucks, they don't fit into the mobile home spaces, and they have three and four cars because, um, a lot of them have family members living with them when it's supposed to be the two adults. And the roads are not being built heavy-duty enough for all the trucks that are going up and down the street. So that Barham is forever being redone and holes being patched shortly after the roads have been resurfaced or redone. And I love what they did with the new apartment house on preventing the people from coming out directly on Barham and not Myers Street. But the problem is, the people don't care that it's a one-way in and out, and they're turning, coming out and making a U-turn at the place they're coming out at. If that new apartment that's going to be, uh, sorry, they're not apartments, they're townhouses and condos. If that place doesn't get, um, the same type of exit, they're gonna be turning left, and right now, for me to get from San Marcos Mobile Estates to the freeway, especially if it's rush hour traffic, it takes more than 15 minutes. I used to go to the doctor's office that I go to in 15 minutes, which was in Vista. I have to allow extra 15 minutes just to get to the freeway. And something has to be done, even though the low-income or the new apartments are getting away with no parking, we can take away in five or 10 years that extra street parking by making it available for widening the road. But we can't give extra street parking when it's not available. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. I just wanted to mention one thing, and that is that, um, many of the parking standards are actually set by the state. And we, yeah, unfortunately, that's a legislature. Uh, we can't, uh, force anything different than what the state laws are. But, but thank you, and I, I agree with you that it, it is quite an issue. Um, okay, uh, next up is going to be Cisco Santana Mon, Mon, Montez, uh, followed by, sorry, um, Alan Geraci, and then I think we will probably have enough time for Tanis Brown, and then we will, uh, move on in the, uh, agenda.
Okay.
Cisco, welcome.
My name is Cisco Santana Montez. Ladies and gentlemen of the council members, I'm here representing the senior residents of Rancho Vayocitos Mobile Estates concerning the problem we have faced for over 15 years. We live in the peaceful quiet of our mobile homes until the weekend starts. On Friday, Saturday, and sometimes Sunday nights, the neighborhood below us, starting below Las Flores Drive, they start to play loud, excessive music with singing. They use amplified equipment, and the music is so loud that at times the windows of our homes rattle. Sound carries very long distances at night. I have called the sheriff's office many, many times throughout the last five years. Sometimes, they don't show up. The sheriffs have stated that there is nothing they can do except shut them down. But the same homes continue to play loud, excessive music throughout the year, week, and weekends, on weekends. Many times they play till midnight, sometimes they play till 2:00 AM in the morning. We are retired people in our seventies and our eighties, and some of the residents are ill in health and are greatly affected by this loud noise. We do want peace and tranquility in our last years. I have included the addresses of the homes I have called the shares on, which add up to 18 homes. Also included is a portion of the ordinance, 2,008-1300, for your information concerning loud, annoying, unnecessary noises which are prohibited. The no, the loud music is so loud that we cannot sleep, sometimes till 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. As our mayor stated, that's you, Rebecca Jones, in the local, the paper, we are, we continuing, we're continuing our commitment to learn, to grow, and identify how we can effectively enhance the quality of our community's members' experience. That's your quote, Mayor. In conclusion, I quote the ordinance that states, "This violation is considered a public nuisance, and upon direction to do so by the city council, the city attorney, Helen Peak, shall take action to stop this nuisance. It is, of course, our hope that the council does take action." Thank you, council members, for hearing me on this subject.
Thank you. Uh, two things that I would, uh, mention. Uh, one is, uh, have you, well, this is a question. Have you given your, uh, phone number to our city clerk? Do we have your contact information?
Yes, I handed her.
Okay, we'll make sure.
Five copies for all of you, and she was supposed to put that on, on each desk, on each one of you.
Okay, so.
You didn't get them?
Well, well, no, just hold on one second. Do they, does our staff have your direct contact information as far as, can they, can they reach out to you? Do they have your phone number, all of that information?
I filled out the.
Okay, so it doesn't have your.
I filled out the request to speak.
Yeah, that doesn't have your phone number on it, so we'll just make sure, yeah, we'll just make sure we have that information. We also do have an app, um, because we need to make sure that everything is, um, uh, you know, we, we have in writing everything that's happening. So, this is not an agenda item, so we will get back to you, but we cannot take any action on this, this evening. And, uh, one other thing, we are policymakers, so we don't actually, um, we're not the ones that are going to be doing the work on this. We will, uh, but we will have city staff reach out to you, okay? So just make sure you give all of your information to our city clerk, and they, they're giving me a nod that they're.
He just did.
They're, they're getting a nod, they're giving a nod that they're.
Mayor, this is a, this is an ordinance, it's in place for a reason. Loud, excessive noise.
Yes, we will, we will look into it, sir.
Okay, well, I hope you do, because it's, it's driving us crazy.
Yeah, I, we, we've heard what you've said, and, uh, your, your grievance is important to us, so we will be reaching out to you and we'll have to do a little research. But that's why I, that's why I suggest you.
Should I give my phone number to the clerk?
Yeah, I think, I think he's, yeah, I think he's saying he has it, yes.
You do have it, thank you.
Yes, I just would like to mention using the app is really important because you can categorize each time that something happens, because it gives us information, and then we have it documented, because documentation is really important in this.
Uh, using what?
So, our, our city app, it's called, um, City of San Marcos. If you go, do you use a smartphone? Because if you don't, that's okay, you can actually go to our website, uh, sand-mercos.net, and then you click on that, and then you put in there, um, "Report a concern", and it will take you to our website, of the page that will give you the, um, uh, an email that you can actually send to us, uh, directly, or a phone number.
Then I'll do that, every time an incident happens?
Yes, yes, you should, yes.
Oh, I'm gonna be busy.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Lionel.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, okay, uh, next up is going to be Alan Geraci, and then Tanis Brown.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, staff, and residents of San Marcos. I've been asked today to make some comments about the Climate Action Campaign's report card concerning the city's climate action plan that was implemented in 2020. I'm often curious about how some officials toss around the term "public safety", usually in the context of how many law enforcement officers and firefighters are employed to protect our community. Important as these individuals are to our safety, public safety must mean more. Certainly, our joint role in the protection of the planet from severe climate events must be included. In 2020, this council passed a climate action plan. Although you all should be congratulated for recognizing the problem, I was personally critical of the climate action plan's minimalist approach towards meeting the legal requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act and meeting only these minimal legal requirements. But our community was still grateful to at least have a climate action plan. But then came the hard work, implementation. In 2020, I said the following to this council on the evening of the climate action plan's passage. Quote, "The evidence of climate change is staring us down, and the brutal outcome is emerging even with our other challenges. By all measures, scientists' conjecture is that this is the last decade to have an impact on climate change, and community climate action plans must reflect the urgency and the challenge. 100% renewable, sustainable energy programs are the only real path. It is with this level of concern and urgency that it is requested that the proposed climate action plan, although meeting minimal legal objectives, must be bolder, broader, and reflective of the urgency we, as a community, must face together." Unquote. Although the, the climate action plan contemplated only a slight change in the baseline 2012 levels of metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent, the idea of maintaining an equilibrium while the community continued to grow seemed to be the plan. Strategies in the plan included increased use of zero emission of alternative fuel vehicles, reduced, reduce the fossil fuel use, reduce vehicle miles traveled, increase building energy efficiency, increase renewable and zero-carbon energy, reduce water use, reduce the, and recycle solid waste, and increase urban tree cover. I have a lot to say about all of these strategies, but of course, don't have the time. But the real question for tonight, my comments are, is how are we doing four years later? The city's assessment of its own progress is due later this year. The Climate Action Campaign has, however, issued its sixth additional Climate Action Plan report card. Still, less than 50% of the San Diego County cities have a climate action plan, including the County of San Diego itself, which still doesn't have a climate action plan after two failed attempts and being sued in court. The positive things that have come out of our climate action plan is our region has chose clean energy. Community choice energy programs to empower ratepayers by providing energy democracy and allowing communities to select energy sources promotes the path of 100% clean energy. San Marcos is among these cities. However, out of the nine cities evaluated, San Marcos is ranked second to last in its Climate Action Plan score with a whopping 59.5%, which by any grading method is an F. Only Escondido scored worse. Key to our future success are the following. Let's update the Climate Action Plan and the general plan to include zero-carbon targets for 2045 or sooner. Let's use auto-enroll or opt-out method for Clean Energy Alliance for 100% clean energy options. Our Climate Action Plan should continue to aim and implement a high-performance reach code for building electrification, and we should commit to developing mobility action plans. In conclusion, I, I say we can do better, we will do better, and we must do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Tanis Brown. Hi, Tanis.
Hello. Okay, I'm not gonna talk about anything that anybody else has talked about tonight, but I won't be here for the next two meetings, and so it is important to me that, um, as our city council, you continue to be the visionaries that we've had in our city council and in our city for so many years. Um, I've had the privilege of being involved in the planning and, and actually seeing what's happened with Parks and Rec, and have been the recipient of many, um, wonderful benefits of being in this city. Not only who we are as a city, but staff and the leadership. So now, the city needs our help, and I am here to ask that you support the Tax Initiative. So now, the city needs our help, and I am here to ask that you support the tax initiative on, on July 9th, because I don't want to see our city go backwards. I, I hope that you can continue to be as visionary, and, while we do have issues in our city, we also have a lot of residents that don't want our city to go step backwards. We have staff that have worked for so long to be, create this amazing city that we live in, that many of us don't want to leave, and don't, it, it's important to us to continue being visionary and being forward-thinking. And right now, I think, as much as there are other issues in the city, if our city doesn't have the resources it needs to do the job, and we start losing staff, we start losing important fire and safety resources, we will all be sorry about that. And so I'm here to hope that all of you will support the tax increase that is coming up on July 9th. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Tanis. Next up is our public hearing, item number 11, and we have a presentation by Donna.
Thank you, Mayor. No presentation tonight.
No, sorry.
No worries.
Sorry, no, yeah.
Just a comment that the RTIP includes transnet-funded projects and other transportation projects that are capacity increasing. This is an annual update, as the RTIP is required to be consistent with the city's CIP budget, so this brings the two in alignment and fulfills that requirement.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Do any council members have any questions or discussion?
I have a quick question, Donna, and I was going through the eight pages or so, and some of the projects. One of those that really caught my eye was Grand Avenue Bridge. Are these potential projects, or are these in the RTIP as far as Sandeg is concerned as viable projects for our community?
These are currently existing projects as approved in the RTIP.
Okay, so those will be funded or potentially funded in the Sandeg budget?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Potentially, potentially, okay. Any further discussion? Would anyone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? No? Okay. Does anyone have any other comments or...
I'll move to adopt.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion as second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any no's? Okay, motion passes. Next up is going to be new business. I think this one, you actually have a presentation, Donna. Sorry, I read my notes incorrectly. If you could just go right ahead and tell us everything we need to know about our budget.
Do we have a speaker on this item, perhaps from the BRC?
Yeah, we do. Do we want to hear from them first? Okay, Marie Ah Mar-Sink, who is our chair from the Budget Review Committee. We definitely want to hear the process of how you, how this actually got presented to us and everything you went through.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Jones, City Council members and staff. As chairman of the Budget Review Committee, I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of our team, introduce, introduce the fiscal year 2024-25 operating and capital improvement projects budgets for your approval. To briefly review, the budget, the Budget Review Committee is a diverse blend of San Marcos community members who graciously volunteer their time to engage with the city's finance department. Our goal is to evaluate, discuss, and present recommendations to the department and city council advocating for a balanced budget proposed during this time. So who is this amazing budget review team? I'm glad you asked. The team includes, who are here tonight, some of them, Chris Freeman, Jim Garcia, Joanne Harris-Malone, James Knowlton, Salvador Roman, Kathleen Smith, our vice chair, Samuel Neuhauser, Benjamin Barlow, and myself. The Finance Committee has been working diligently to create a balanced and responsible budget for the upcoming fiscal year. However, this year has been more challenging than previous years, of course, minus COVID. The cost of the city services that we enjoy as San Marcos residents have sharply risen, and despite the Finance Committee's best effort, efforts, there's a considerable gap between projected revenue and proposed budget. The Finance and Budget Review Committee have explored all possible options to close the budget gap, including one-time use funds or reserves. However, these measures alone are not sufficient nor favorable. Not only is the rise in cost for everyday essentials, including gas, groceries, and dining out, a challenge for our own residents, but it reaffirms what the city is experiencing on a much larger scale. Consequently, consequence, I can't talk today. Consequently, the city is exploring a possible sales tax measure to maintain and possibly improve infrastructure and public services. These services include fire protection, paramedic services, water quality, park and trail upkeep, just to name a few. We, as a committee, believe the tax measure aligns with prudent fiscal planning to ensure that the budget can meet long-term policy goals while allowing the flexibility for flexibility in the future. Based on the current data and lengthy discussions within our monthly meeting, we, as a group, support this measure. Additionally, we encourage the public to provide feedback to the Finance Committee and to ourselves, and continue to stay informed, being that it is everyone's decision. And who is the second amazing finance team? Well, that team includes city manager, Michelle Bender, who is right up here, finance director, Donna Apar, senior management analyst, Janet Brotherton, who's in the back, and office specialist, Jasani Avilia, who always kept me on time. So this team has done an outstanding job this past year. The Budget Review Committee would like to thank the entire staff for their perseverance, dedication, and professionalism. We believe that they have the city's best interest and future at heart. Now, I would like to officially report that the Budget Community, Budget Review Committee unanimously approves staff's recommendation for the budget that will be presented to you tonight. Thank you again, Mayor Jones and council, for the opportunity, opportunity to serve as the Budget Review Committee Chair. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Okay. Staff, Donna, Michelle, who's starting out here?
Great, I'm going to hand it over to Donna Apar, finance director. The BRC definitely stole my thunder there, thank you. I wanted to thank the finance team, which they eloquently did, and this year, I really wanted to thank the executive team, their managers, their leads, their supervisors. This budget took the entire city to create. We had staff involvement at the lowest level this year, just providing incredible insight. The people doing the job know how to do the job best and have the best suggestions. So this budget does incorporate the entire city team's feedback. It wasn't an easy one, but we, we executed on your direction to balance the budget without dipping into reserves. So we're very proud of that. We're proud to present this budget to you tonight, and yes, there's challenges, but we accomplished the goals. So Donna is going to present the, the budget, and Isaac Etchamendi, our Development Services Director, will present the CIP budget tonight.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Marie. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we'll be covering the general fund operations and maintenance budget for fiscal year 2024-25. We'll discuss an overview of the upcoming fiscal year's revenue and expenditures. We'll also touch on the replacement and rehabilitation funds and general fund reserves, and then talk briefly about factors considered in ongoing future planning. Then Isaac will be covering the capital improvement program budget. For fiscal year 2024-25, overall revenues are projected to increase by about 5% compared to the fiscal year 2023-24 adopted budget. Definitely going in the right direction, however, this is still well below what it would have been had revenues grown 5% each year since fiscal year 19. Sales tax is anticipated to remain flat, as economists note that consumers may be starting to rein in their spending while continuing to deal with elevated inflation and the highest interest rates in decades. Also, that retail sales are weaker than expected, and spending was higher at grocery stores and restaurants. Charges for services are also projected to be flat, as fire season is hard to predict, and with the higher rainfall totals, the recent one wasn't as active as previous seasons. On the flip side, with housing stock increasing, though still high, a slight easing of mortgage loan rates, property tax is anticipated to increase in fiscal year 25. There's also an uptick in projected franchise fees for fiscal year 25, with Edco's organics program rollout, and anticipated July 1 rate increases, as confirmed by Edco. Though about 1.3 million in one-time revenue is used to achieve a balanced budget, it is not a regular recurring source, so it is not considered in the revenue growth comparison over the prior year adopted budget. This pie chart shows our general fund revenue projections of 93.4 million. As shown, property tax and sales tax make up 59% of the total, followed by charges for services, making up the top three contributors. Franchise fees are included in the licenses and permits category, making it tied with special assessments. Real estate portfolio income includes our real estate partnership, Creekside Marketplace, and other real property, and remains steady as we are now about fully occupied, though this does mean some delays in some capital investment projects needed to achieve optimal rental facilities. Other includes intergovernmental revenue from items such as grants and fees from the state. Transient occupancy tax is also projected to remain steady, and the one-time revenues discussed earlier makes up 1% of the total projected revenue. For the fiscal year 2024-25 expenditures, staff endeavor to maintain pre-pandemic service levels as much as possible within revenue constraints by continuing to engage in best value analysis for various lines of operations, such as the city's white fleet, ballfield maintenance, building services, parking enforcement, street sweeping, and employee benefits programs, saving an average annual amount of about 720,000. Taking an even deeper dive into each line item, trimming in areas where service level decreases would be minimized, and again, foregoing additional transfers to our three replacement and rehabilitation funds. So despite the normal annual increases totaling about 4 million between sheriff contract costs, employee benefits, and contract costs, and inflationary increases for nondiscretionary services, such as citywide insurance, fuel, and utility, we managed to achieve a minimal overall increase of 3%. Without those expected normal annual increases, direct expenses are actually a decrease of about 6% over the fiscal year 24 original budget. This pie chart depicts the general fund operating expenditures of 93.4 million by function. Law enforcement and fire services are just over half of the total, at 53%, followed by public works, internal service departments, which includes finance, IT, HR, communications, and economic development, development services, parks and recreation, administration, legislative, which includes city clerk and city attorney, then other uses, which includes a subsidy to the lighting and landscaping maintenance district and senior nutrition meals program. For the three replacement and rehabilitation funds, though there is no additional funding projected, proposed operational programming of existing funds for next fiscal year include items such as ongoing leases for public works and fire vehicles, a scheduled ambulance re-chassis, gym floor re-sanding, carpet replacement at Fire Station 3, LED conversions, as well as some aging playground replacements to maintain safety of the equipment. This table reflects the projected balances of the three replacement and rehabilitation funds. With a beginning total of about 7.7 million across all three funds, there is a proposed transfer from the facilities fund to cover the proposed expenses mentioned earlier in the vehicle and equipment fund, along with the other proposed fiscal year 25 expenses mentioned in the previous slide, as well as appropriations reserved for 11 existing capital improvement program projects. Though current existing projects would still be funded without additional funding anticipated, the total projected remaining balance of about 2.3 million would be available to cover only another year of current lease payment obligations, and two new fire and general leases beginning in fiscal year 26, which cannot be postponed another year. Regarding our general fund unassigned reserve balances, though the use of reserves was proposed for the fiscal year 23-24 original adopted budget gap of about 3.8 million, the required unassigned reserve minimum of 40% was still met. At July 1, staff got to work in minimizing the use of reserves and was able to reduce the fiscal year 24 deficit, bringing the level up by 1%. Fiscal year 25 reflects a balanced budget, so the use of reserves is projected to be unnecessary. However, with an overall budget increase of about 3%, the percentage for the same 38.4 million in unassigned reserves against a slightly higher budget brings the level back down by 1%. The 38.4 million is evenly split between the three unassigned reserve categories, with about 12.8 million each in the catastrophic and emergency reserves, one-time recurring savings opportunity reserves, and economic contingency pension stabilization reserves bucket. Our reserves demonstrate the city's fiscal prudence as we continue to meet the minimum policy requirement of 40%. Thanks to council leadership and policies, the city has had advantages over others in the region during this new adverse economic trajectory, with a reserve and replacement and rehabilitation fund policies, an innovative real estate portfolio, establishment of the Section 115 pension trust account, and ongoing pursuit of grant funding, to name a few. As we plan, continue to plan a long-term financial strategy to sustain future operations and services, we are considering challenging factors, such as the cost of providing current service levels is continuing to grow more rapidly and outpace growth in revenues. Given the inflation rate environment, we see steep increases in nondiscretionary expenses. Coupled with slower revenue growth, we have limited revenue raising options outside of voter measures. Using one-time revenues is not a fiscally prudent practice, and finally, a mechanism to cure the unfunded infrastructure needs, to minimize increased costs and risk in delaying projects, to avoid depletion of the three replacement and rehabilitation funds, and to be able to fulfill the standards of coverage need for future Fire Station Number 5. Before Isaac proceeds with presenting the capital improvement program budget, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Donna. Any questions from the council? You all look tired.
I have some comments on the overall budget, but I can wait until the very end.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Mustrow.
So we're not dipping into the reserves. What, what services are we pulling back on?
We're, we're pulling back on a variety of services. Very, very little is untouched of public safety. We're not pulling back on public safety services, and we have not pulled back on our parks and recreation offerings. However, most contracts within the city have been looked at reduced, some more significantly than others.
So the questions I get are, have to do with service cutsback, cutbacks, rather. So we're not cutting back on services that the general public would otherwise see, they're services that we internalize to maintain that internal operation. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, I'll, I'll let Donna jump into what we've, the strategy has been trying to cut back where the, the impact is not going to be immediately felt by the public. So we've frozen positions, we've cut back staffing, we've held the line on compensation, we've reduced service contracts so that perhaps the public over the course of the next year might notice that the trees look a little less trimmed, and the grass is a little longer than it was, the medians might not be as well-maintained, street sweeping may not meet our traditional service levels. We've tried to, to minimize the impact to the public, so not cut anything that impacts life safety, and continue to try to provide the same service levels for recreation and other items that are really important to the community's well-being.
And we have sat down individually, of course, with you and with Donna, and gone over all these different items, and very commendable for the work that's been done to get us to this particular point, so thank you.
You know, and I wanted to ask you to talk a little bit about our best value analysis, because I think that is something that's really remarkable that not every city actually does. And you know, I was talking about this actually at Sandeg, because there's a lot of money wasted at Sandeg on a pretty regular basis. I was saying, one of the things that we do is we, we sit down and we look at, does it make sense to outsource something, or does it make sense to actually have that done in-house? sense to outsource something, or does it make sense to actually have that done in-house? And that, and essentially what that means is some of the garden, I don't want to say gardening, but you know, landscaping actually that we do in our median, some of that is done by contract because it's a better, it's a better value for us rather than have in-house staff. And that's something I think we started a long time ago, I want to say, gosh, maybe even before I was on the city council. I think it's been going on for quite some time. You know, and then we look at, for instance, street sweeping, does that make sense to do in-house? And we actually have, you know, like we have to invest in actually buying the equipment for that, but long-term, is that something that actually is better for us financially because it's going to save us money? So if you could talk a little bit about that and kind of what this last year has looked at like, just to kind of come to, you know, because we're providing services that are one thing, and we want to make sure it's apples and apples and not apples and oranges, can we provide that same service to our community, and does it make sense? So if you could talk a little bit about that, that would be great.
Yes, absolutely. I think you did a great job. I think you've pretty much covered it. Yes, each department took a look at a variety of line items for services that we provide, and we did the analysis to determine, is a contract less expensive in the long-term than hiring internal employees? And you're right, we started this work over a decade ago. At that time, when we did the analysis, a lot of the lines of work actually were less expensive when they were done by an outside contractor. Now, this year in the budget cycle, there were some line items that actually came back when we looked comprehensively, so we didn't just compare employee salaries versus the contract amount. We looked at the fully loaded rate, benefits, long-term impacts of pension for public employees. When we took a look at that, we actually determined that we could improve service levels for ball field maintenance, improve service levels for street sweeping by bringing that function back internally. So we're going to be leasing two street sweepers, and even with the cost of leasing the street sweepers in the first six years, we're still going to save money over the long term. So we're continuing to outsource our white fleet, something that we started over a decade ago. What else are we bringing in versus out, Donna?
I just want to add, in addition to bringing in versus out, or out versus in, we also look at other programs. So our employee benefits program that was initiated about five years ago has so far given us the savings of about one and a half million dollars. So items and lines of businesses we're taking a look at.
And I think that's something that we should always be looking at because I'm going to give an example about that. So NCTD, back, I want to say it was in 2007 or eight, no, well, I don't know, it might have been even 2006, 2006, '07, '08, something like that, they actually decided to outsource many of the positions of drivers and that sort of thing, and then they brought parts back because they're constantly analyzing, and I think that's something that government doesn't necessarily do, but I know, and I feel very, very passionate about this because wasting money is wasting your money, and you know, we should always be thinking about every single dollar. It doesn't matter if today it's a good value, tomorrow it could change, and so we should always be looking at that, and I know that we do. I just want to keep that as something that we always have in our mind. Is this going to, long-term, maybe it's good for now, but next year it might not be that we're always looking at that. Because again, like, NCTD is a perfect example of that. They're actually making changes because they want to be more efficient, they want to save money, which is a good thing. So anyway, I just want to mention that, and then I think you had some comments, Deputy Mayor, and then maybe Councilmember Nunez, you might too.
I have a couple of questions. So on Slide four, where you talked about the charges for services revenue anticipated, so if these charges are approved later this year, I'm guessing these amounts don't get us to where we need to be? So that's one question. I think that's kind of confirmed for me, that those revenues do not get us where we need to be.
Correct.
Okay. And then if those additional fees are approved, will those, will the budget be amended for the additional fees that we'll be bringing in at some point during the year?
Yes, at that point, we will bring it forward during the mid-year budget process.
Okay. Okay. Good. And then, I think you already answered this, Michelle. When you've talked about the department reorganizations and the different things that we're doing, I think you said you've been doing it for about 10 years. Is that correct?
Yes, we've been, we've been in cost-cutting mode and re-evaluation mode for quite some time. Department heads have not had the ability to refill positions without city manager approval for several years.
Okay, and then on Page eight, when you're talking about the replacement and rehabilitation funds, I think what you said, Donna, was we are spending down those funds this year, and if we don't start replacing those funds, then we will have no replacement and rehabilitation funds without any new revenue.
Correct, correct. It's anticipated that by fiscal year 26.
Okay. Oh, because you have 1 point or 2-point something million left. Okay. Let me just see here. Okay, that's that. So I think you also answered this, but if you have anything to add, because sometimes we're asked, how did we get here and what has staff done in prior years? Do you have anything else to add to that other than what you already said?
So in preparation for tonight, I have been reflecting on the city's journey and jotted down a few things. I think we'd have to start with Prop 13, which established our property tax rate. So for every $1 million home, we get an average of about $660. To mitigate this, the city established CFDs and a real estate portfolio and always pursuing grant funding. We also had the redevelopment agency, but that has dissolved in 2012. And then we have had CalPERS rate increases and market losses, but we've combated that with the implementation of Tier Two in 2012, prior to PAPRA, which was established on January of 2013. And then beginning in 2019, employees are paying more into pension over the rest in the county. Also in 2019, the city established a Section 115 Pension Trust. Sales tax revenue used to be enough to cover at least our law enforcement expense, but that shifted in fiscal year 2016. The adverse economy during the pandemic, we've had federal assistance, but that's temporary. And then, you know, we've had numerous unfunded state mandates throughout the years. As also experienced by other agencies, the growth in cost of services and products has been outpacing the growth in revenue. So the method of expense cutting and not auto-filling vacancies was started with our prior city manager. So to add on to those things that we've done to mitigate challenges, we're currently exploring options to increase the revenue side.
Okay. Thank you. And then, what happens if, if additional revenue does not materialize? We don't know what's going to happen July 9th, we don't know what's going to happen in November. If we do not get additional revenue, I think everybody needs to know what might happen.
Yes, if we don't get additional revenue, then we need to sit down together and make some, some more policy decisions. The cuts that we've made this year, we can't make exactly the same cuts next year. These are temporary cuts. The community will start to feel the impact, so we need to sit down as policymakers, you're going to need to decide which services to cut to the public. We will need to cut service to the public, and that is a policy-level discussion because the most money is in public safety, and I know that as a staff and as a council, we understand the community's demand for top-notch public safety, and we don't want to impact that. So it's going to be a very challenging conversation if we don't get additional revenue.
And then, just a few comments, and I think Councilmember Snella touched on this too. I think staff has done an amazing job this year, the entire staff, of figuring out how to get us here today. Everybody has had to jump in and analyze their budgets and make decisions that they didn't want to do. We've always followed sound fiscal policies, and I think we're probably as lean as we can be. Some people are doing multiple jobs, and so because we're as lean as we can be, what's going to happen if the revenue doesn't come in is, like you said, it'll affect the services and it'll affect the quality of life that everybody expects here. So those are my comments. I think, you know, July 9th will be a very important meeting, and we'll see what happens then.
I wanted to touch on one thing that you did say, Donna, and that was, on a million-dollar home, you were talking about the $660. How much property tax revenue do we get on educational facilities like Palomar College, CSU San Marcos, our elementary schools, our high schools, all of the educational purpose land? What do we get as far as, because we still have to provide services, and it's the right thing to do, of course, but how much do we, property tax do we bring in on those properties?
So those types of properties are exempt from property tax, so we get zero
Right.
in property tax.
And then on our affordable, housing deed-restricted properties, we get how much property tax?
Those property types are eligible to apply for exemptions, and so if it is approved, we also get zero.
And then on our hospital and medical uses?
They are part of the auto-exempt type, so we get zero from those as well.
So we have a lot of education, which is great. We have a lot because we're providing talent for jobs and that sort of thing, job creation, and we have a lot of, you know, affordable housing, it's the right thing to do. And then we also have, you know, a lot of the medical uses. Unfortunately, it also puts us in a very difficult position because, you know, we still provide the services, which of course we want to do, but we're not bringing any revenue. And 6.6% county-wide is the lowest when you have, I'm going to give an example of the city of Coronado, I think they get between $3,100 and, oh, here, thanks.
I have it.
Let me get, let me get my glasses on. Okay, so they get $3,100, $3,123, and we get $660 for the very same million-dollar property. So it's a, it's a big difference. And cities like, I think Poway gets like 1,000 or 2,000, let me see. Yeah, Poway gets 2,059 for that same $660 that we bring in. And cities like Vista, for instance, they get 1,409, but they actually bring in a half a cent of sales tax on top of it. So we, I mean, we definitely are in a difficult position. I just want to bring attention to that because, I mean, there is a point, we are lean, we do have a lean staff, it does, it does wear on us. I know many of us are wearing different hats, I guess not really saying us, I mean, just city staff. And, you know, it is, it's a hard thing, and at some point in time, you know, people are feeling the crunch of having to do that extra work, which we're grateful for, but I know it's hard on you guys. So anyway, I just want to say thank you to everyone that does that, but I did want to bring attention to that. And then Councilmember Nunez, you had some comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a follow-up question. As was mentioned, one of our largest expenditures is our sheriff's contract, right, an important part of our city. Can you remind us where we're at in our contract in terms of when we would be looking at negotiating? And then does that mean that we would look at cutting that possibly, or what that looks like?
So fiscal year 25 would be the third year of the contract, and would be a 3.5% increases, increase through the remaining term of the contract, which is through fiscal year 27. And then I'll let Michelle speak to that.
And then I believe cutting, cutting back on a public safety contract would probably be a discussion we have at the council level at a budget workshop. I don't know that at staff, we would, we would cut the contract without your approval.
Okay. And that would be part of the discussion that we would have then, obviously depending on, on what happens between now and November?
Yes, obviously what happens between now and November will have a very significant impact on everything, and, you know, earmuffs for whoever's going to negotiate the sheriff's contract, but we do have a very good deal right now with the sheriff's contract. So my fingers are firmly crossed that we will walk out of the next round of negotiations with the same very modest increases to the public safety costs.
I do have a clarifying question on that, and that is, so it's actually the Board of Supervisors that actually does the negotiating. Could you explain that, how the city, what our negotiation actually means?
Yes, so the MOUs or the Memorandums of Understanding between the staff and the County Board of Supervisors are negotiated at the county. So those negotiations are not in sync with the contract city negotiations. So when they're at the table, everybody's taking a leap of faith that we're going to line up. What's happened over the course of our contract is that we were able to negotiate successfully thanks to the team that was at that table a few years ago. 1% moving up to 3.5% increases during that same time period, the contracts approved by the Board of Supervisors for the staff have far exceeded that amount. So that, that will be interesting when we sit down again.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes. Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor was trying to jump in.
No, go ahead.
Actually, okay. Go ahead.
I was going to kind of go through this at the end, but since you guys all went, I'm going to tag along too.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, and I'll spare us all by repeating what's already been said. I agree with everything that everybody has said. It is an incredible achievement that we're sitting here tonight, passing a balanced budget without tapping into reserves. How that was done, it was a bit of a miracle, in my opinion, and kudos to our Budget Review Committee, our entire staff, but it really even goes beyond that because as we went through this process, and it's, you know, we get a presentation tonight, but as everybody knows, this budget process is months in the making. And, you know, a few months ago, we were negotiating, you know, labor, you know, contracts with fire and others, and everybody compromised, everybody was very professional in those negotiations. Everybody got something, but not, nobody got everything that they wanted, and it was this real compromise that came together and really helped put this all together. Having said that, I think it's abundantly clear that, you know, our team, our staff is doing more with less, and that's great as far as, you know, being able to provide a balanced budget tonight, but long-term, I don't know if that is really sustainable, right? And we're going to burn out our employees, we're going to overwork them, morale's going to be hurt if we, if we continue going down that road long-term, and then, of course, we'll have, you know, higher attrition, more difficulty hiring, all the different effects that come with all of that. And as we go on this year with, you know, July 9th, having a conversation as a council about putting a tax measure on the ballot, and then ultimately trying to communicate with our residents as to why that's important, I think it's, at least for somebody like myself who's historically been anti-tax in just about everything that I've done, ever done politically or personally, I feel very confident that our team, our staff, has done everything they can to be as efficient and cost-cutting and mindfulness around that. That puts me at a very, a much better comfort level when we pursue increasing revenue. And I want to make sure that our city has all of the resources from public safety to parks and rec to infrastructure that we, that we need as a community, that we want as a community, and I want to make sure that our hard-working staff isn't overworked for long periods of time, and that we're able to give you the resources, and I mean the folks in this office, the folks that are out on the streets protecting us every day. And I, I mean, the, the folks in this office, the folks that are out on the streets protecting us every day, the folks that are responding to emergencies every day. I want to make sure that they have the resources to be able to serve our community the way our community wants to be served. So thank you for all of your efforts in this, and just an incredible achievement. If you would have asked me four months ago if it could be done, I probably would have, I would have told you probably not. And so not, not tapping into our reserves, that's a big piece of this, this community's culture of fiscal responsibility. And we pride ourselves that we have this emergency rainy day fund. And we don't want to tap into it because we know, once it's gone, it's gone for good. There's no way to replace it. And so we need to keep it for a real true emergency. And the fact that you were able to do that this time around, just kudos all the way around. Thank you.
Well put. Thank you, Councilmember. Deputy Mayor?
I have one follow-up question. I think the mayor made some good comments about the schools and hospitals and the different public agencies. So I understand they don't pay property tax. Do they pay into a CFD or Landscape and Lighting or any of that?
I believe, and Isaac may want to weigh in on it because he's the expert as well, but I believe those property types are also exempt from special assessments.
Okay. And you can get back on this question, but I thought a couple of years ago, we had discussions about, that there was something about universities or schools having to contribute. There was some sort of change in Sacramento?
It was
that they had to contribute to?
The Marina decision, I think. But that was just mitigation, I think, when they're building, but I could be wrong.
That relates to environmental review and the requirement to pay mitigation and not just not allocate funding for year after year after year.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with ongoing operational expenses.
But I, I don't think we've actually received any money from Palomar or CSU San Marcos on, that, that would be those mitigation funds.
Those were built without any contribution
Right.
to any traffic
Okay.
or other
I didn't think so.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you.
I watch that pretty closely. I ask all the time. All right. Any other questions before we move on to Isaac? Okay, Isaac, you have the floor.
Thank you. Today, I'm going to be going over the capital improvement program. So first off, we're going to spend a little bit of time looking at what the purpose of the CI program is. The program focuses on the delivery of infrastructure projects that enhance the community and retain the functionality of existing infrastructure. The capital program is a budget over a course of five years. The proposed budget before you will include 54 projects. And the budget also proposes to appropriate an additional $16.9 million for fiscal year '25. So as part of this project, as part of this adoption, should you choose to move forward, the CIP also includes nine new projects. This includes repairs to the bridge at Discovery Lake, pedestrian lighting along Mission, Pink House restoration, a new slurry program, which is a four-year program that we, we always have two of them running on the budget, and that would be for fiscal years '28 through '31. La Marada storm drain, the senior center HVAC, citywide floodplain analysis, Rancho Santa Fe storm drain, and the Creek-specific plan amendment. If we look at the budget summary, we can see here that the vast majority of the funding sources are special revenues and restricted for specific use. For example, RMRA is shown as the largest segment there, is restricted for roadway use. Gas tax similarly, and transit as well as for road use. We have very little of this allocated from any kind of general fund source moving forward, and most of this is restricted to those specific uses. Looking at some upcoming key projects that are completing, we have the Bradley Bike Park, which will be opening this summer, shown on the left-hand side there. We have our Traffic Management Center, which is actually up and running. We also have our Discovery Street Extension, which is now open to the public. The Connor Synthetic Turf Replacement Project was completed and is, is shown there and is beautiful. We also have the Creek Infrastructure Project. We are wrapping up the Paseo del Arroyo Park Project and wrapping that up. So I wanted to highlight a few projects in fiscal year '25 for you. Key amongst them is the Annual Streets Program. This is the program where we slurry seal streets. We are proposing moving from an annual appropriation in the program from $2 million to $4 million. This is in order to keep up with the increasing costs and in order to stretch out that RMRA funds and to use it on more roadways. Additionally, we're going to be looking at Fire Station 3. Those activities will include the construction auxiliary storage building, of which we're finalizing a claim, and we anticipate being able to go into construction in fiscal year '25. And we'll also be looking at renovations at that fire station. That fire station is somewhat old and is in need of some repairs. We are also looking at Fire Station 5. This is going to be including to seek out viable lands, which we're currently doing, and we anticipate continuing to do into fiscal year '25. Some additional highlights I wanted to point out is going to be the reconstruction of Rancho Santa Fe Road from Lake Ridge to Melrose. For those of you that commute along that roadway, you've noticed its deterioration over the last few years. It is reaching the end of its useful life, and so we are going to be going into construction this summer and be bringing forward a contract for you to award shortly. That reconstruction will include the removal of the pavement, digging it out and repaving it. On this project, we're actually going to be doing something kind of unique. We're going to be doing a recycling process called cold-in-place recycling. That is a very green way to approach paving. It can only be done in certain circumstances. However, Rancho Santa Fe Road is a great candidate for it. So we're going to be moving forward with that, and it'll be very exciting for us to do. But that's not where we're ending our reconstruction efforts. We understand that San Marcos Boulevard needs to, is reaching the end of its useful life as well. So we're going to be working on reconstructing the paving in San Marcos Boulevard. And also, some of those signals and lighting that you see along San Marcos Boulevard is also reaching the end of its useful life and needs to be replaced. So that will be part of the project as well. We're wrapping up design in fiscal year '25, and we'll also go out to bid and be ready to award in the summer of next year. Included in this budget is also the La Marada Storm Drain, the west side of town, largely built out before some of our drainage master plans were in effect. There also hasn't been large amounts of redevelopment in the area to necessitate a storm drain renovations. So we're going to be proposing a storm drain along La Marada that would tie into Los Postes. That storm drain would allow for future development to utilize it and also continue to drain the area consistent with our current master plans. And with that, I wanted to mention the consent item that was continued at the second meeting in June, amending the Creek budget for the current fiscal year, is currently represented in this capital program budget. So should the council choose to adopt the proposed budget as presented, staff recommends the fiscal year '25 budget should be subject to adjustments based on the council's actions on the Creek Infrastructure Budget Amendment for fiscal year '23, '24 at the next council meeting. And with that, is there any questions?
Well, I want to make one observation. You said Rancho Santa Fe Road. When we do that, it's going to be wonderful. It's going to be wonderful when it's done. But in the interim, it's going to be extremely painful to get that, that construction done because having to replace such a large segment of the road is going to be very tough on, on our residents and the people that do come through our city on a very, very regular basis. We do have quite a bit of cut-through track. So before we get excited about it, it does need to be done, but I just want to bring attention to that. Any questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Snella?
Yeah, I, I agree with you on the Rancho Santa Fe Road, but I also think that the pain is going to be well worth it.
Absolutely.
This, this, I've been getting a lot of feedback in recent weeks and months about Rancho Santa Fe Road in particular. And I'm glad that, that it's, it's on the list. In fact, this list is quite impressive, too. It really shows a commitment by the city to invest in infrastructure. And the, the last, you know, 10 minutes of our conversation was all about, you know, stretching our dollars to get the most out of them. And while doing that, we're still showing a set, a very sound plan to meet the, the most immediate pressing needs from an infrastructure standpoint. And, and Isaac, I'm glad, I was going to ask you the question, ask you a question about reconstruction of a road versus resurfacing of a road, but you, you kind of already hit that, and I appreciate that. But from what you, what you explained, it sounds like the reconstruction of a road versus resurfacing is a more long-term solution and probably a more robust project?
Yes, that's correct. The reconstruction replaces the roadway to a like-new condition, whereas resurfacing is meant to protect the roadway and extend its lifespan.
Wow, that's, that's great. Yeah, just, just, again, more kudos. A phenomenal commitment to meeting the infrastructure needs of our community. Thank you.
Since you brought that up, I do have a, a question about that. Can we get a presentation? I forget what is, is it called PSI? I always get that confused. I know it's not per square inch, like a tire, but what, what's it called again?
It's the Pavement Condition Index or PCI?
PCI, yes. PCI, we should get a, a report on that because I think it's important for folks to understand how that is because I don't even know if you've even heard a presentation on that. We do it every few years just to explain to the public and then also to, when we get new council members, what's going on. Because it's really important that at some point in time, if you don't invest any money into a roadway, then it gets to the point of, yeah, it gets to the point of no return. And then it's far more expensive, so you really do need to maintain them on a fairly regular basis. And, you know, we always go through and we go, okay, this road is this, and this road is that. And then I think there's also a confusion on, on the part of, sometimes we have private roads that are, are very cracked and in bad shape. We, we don't actually, we're not responsible for that. So I think getting that PCI report would be a good thing to have. You know, sometime in the next few months, that would be good. And then, did you have something, Councilmember?
Just real quickly, you were talking about the, the positive environmental impact of the reconstruction. Does a, we, we lift the asphalt out, break it down to the aggregate, binding agents, reset, resurface, so effectively we've reused the road that was there? Is that essentially it?
That's correct. That's what we'll be doing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
One question, only. Greenway, is that less expensive than what we're used to, or where does that fall?
It, it's equivalent. The benefits of it are that you're using less new material.
Right, totally, agree.
Yeah, but the cost is equivalent.
Okay.
Thanks. Preservation of Resource. Councilmember Nunez, did you have anything? Okay, any further discussion? Wait, I think we might, okay, I have a question for Paul Mendoza. Did you, you had two items on here, which was number nine, you already spoke about that. And then you put tax. Was that, did he already leave?
I think he left.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't see it. Okay, all right, well then, we, he's not speaking again, since he's not here. Okay, any other public comments on this? Do we have any? No. Okay, all right, well then, I would make a motion to approve the budget.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and he knows? Okay, well, that was easy, after all that discussion. Sorry.
And just to clarify, it's with the caveat about
Correct, yes, yes, yes. As presented, yes. And then moving on to item number 13?
Yes, item number 13. As a requirement to address executive compensation as a new business item, the following compensation ranges related to executive positions are impacted due to salary range adjustments effective with the fiscal year '25 budget. Grade 7, which includes the city manager classification, has an annual salary range of $221,170,000 to $300,457. Grade 6, which includes assistant manager classification, has an annual salary range of $176,476 to $239,741. Grade 5F, which includes the fire chief classification, has an annual salary range of $174,843 to $237,523. Grade 5, which includes the administrative services director, deputy city manager, and development services director slash city engineer classifications, have an annual salary range of $164,931 to $224,058. Grade 4, which includes the director of finance and director of IT classifications, have an annual salary range of $154,151 to $209,399. And grade 3, which includes the business process director slash city clerk, community and economic development director, deputy city engineer, director of parks and recreation, HR risk division director, public works director, and strategic communications director, have an annual salary range of $144,057 to $195,700. That concludes our comment.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Or any discussion on this? Okay, I'd move to approve.
I'll, I'll second that, and I'll, I'll just say that, you know, it's always, to me, it always seems uncomfortable when we talk about people's salary. I understand in the public sector, that's, it's a, it's a requirement. But I do really appreciate the transparency that it brings to it. So thank you for reading through those.
Okay, I, wait. Yeah, okay, all right, any other comments? Sorry. Any, no, okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any knows? Okay, motion approves. Do we have any further oral communications? Yes, okay. All right, thank you. First comment is, let's see how many we have. Hold on just one sec. 19 speakers. So at 19, 19 speakers and everyone gets five minutes each, that's quite a while. So I guess my question would be, does the council have any issues? That's, that's like an hour and a half from now, so that's going to put us at 10:30. Does the council have any issues with us going to three minutes? Is anyone, is everyone okay with that, going three minutes versus five? Okay, we're gonna, we're going to have three minutes each for the 19 speakers that we have left this evening. Can you set the timer for three minutes? Yes, okay.
Before we get started, I do have a comment about that. In the future, as long as I've been on the council, we have not reduced the time from five to three minutes. In the future, if we are going to be doing that, I suggest that we let our speakers know since they've been here. We started our meeting at 6 o'clock. So in the future, I would request that, that we adopt that and we announce it at the beginning of our meeting.
So Councilmember, I, I appreciate your comments. And at 19 minutes each, I mean, there, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of people. And we do want to have their voices heard. At Sandag, and I totally disagree with this, they actually cut it down to one minute. I don't think that's right. I would never do that. I think it's completely unfair. So at three minutes, I think that gives people ample time to speak. I think we, most, most city councils actually allow three minutes overall. And if there is any discussion that the council at a, at a later date might want to have three minutes for discussion of, of time for people to speak, I, I think it's plenty of time. One minute, I totally disagree with, I would never try to do that. I think it's wrong. But anyway, so thank you for your comments. I, I think that, well, I believe it is definitely at the discretion of the board. I have no other, out of the five of us, you are the only one that does believe that. I think that it should be something done. I mean, if we had three speakers, that's one thing, no problem with that. But it is getting kind of late, and I think three minutes is ample amount of time for folks to get their, their voices heard. So anyway, the first speaker will be Virginia, and I want to say it might be Hennett or Hen, Henry. I'm sorry, I can't, I can't read that. The second one will be Maggie Penaflore, followed by Aiden Abiquin Brown. We'll start with those three, and in that order. Virginia, are you here this evening still with us? Okay. No, that's definitely Virginia. Next up is Maggie Penaflore, followed by Aiden Abiquin Brown, followed by Dan, just Dan. It looks like D A N, but okay. Maggie Penaflore? Okay, followed by Aiden Abiquin Brown? Okay, please don't shout from the if they don't answer, I I'm being respectful of everyone. Dan, followed by Warshon Ismail, and then it will be Shiro? Dan, are you here? Come on down, welcome.
Dear City Council, thank you for all the effort you do for benefit of San Marcos residents. I'm American citizen and frankly, I don't understand how the city council has become a stage for Hamas terrorist supporters. They come here gaslighting you with lies and reversing facts. Let's remember how all this started. Hamas invaded Israel on October seventh, which was Jewish holiday. They murdered more than twelve hundred people, elders, women, children, everybody. Hamas is internationally recognized jihadist terrorist organization whose declared goal is to kill Jews. Hamas actioned that day war crimes. They raped young girls, mutilated their bodies, burned kids in front of their parents the same way ISIS did. They cut people head to took them back to Gaza as trophies. They stole people and bodies to trade later. Among these victims are many American citizens, our people. I want to remind you that after nine eleven, the biggest terrorist attack on America, Gazans marched the streets celebrating deaths of Americans and praising al-Qaeda terrorists. So it's hardly surprising these terrorists hide rockets in their kids' bedroom. It's hardly surprising that Gazans journalists hide Israeli hostages in their homes. Those are war crimes. They put their own people in danger for PR and empathy from us while cynically abusing our Western values. Here at the city council, they gaslight you with words like ethnic cleansing and apartheid. There are zero Jews living Gaza. Meanwhile, about twenty percent of Israel citizens are Arab Muslims and Christians. These citizens hold the same rights and responsibilities as their fellow Jewish citizens. These Arab Muslim Christians are fighting together in the idea of against this jihadist evil in Gaza. Many made ultimate sacrifice for their country, Israel. The land Israel is indigenous to Jews and it's their homeland, but right now there's a war, a war Israel did not start. Ceasefire, ceasefire, they chant. Well, I will let you know that as right now Biden administration has put forward a ceasefire proposal. UN Security Council agreed to it. Israel already agreed to it, but Palestinian Hamas has not, which only further shows their true motives. They are not motivated to help their own people. They are motivated to kill more Jews. They want more people to die. Despite all this, we still have Hamas supporters here in San Marcos. Their support for Hamas doesn't promote peace in the region and their support does not stem from care for Palestinians. Instead, they come here from hate for Israel and ultimately promote Jews hatred. As they use the council to promote the hateful agenda, they weaponize our American diversity to incite racial hate and undermine our American values. Please don't let their chants confuse you or distract you from the important work you do for this community. Thank you.
Okay, Dan. Next up will be Warshon Ismail? Followed by Shiro and then Jack Greenspun?
Warshon Ismail, that was kind of hard to follow that he had the audacity to come up here and spew Islamophobic hatred. Nonetheless, I digress. These following statements are exempt for council member Nunez. Shame on you, shame on your silence, shame on your moral apathy, shame on your refusal to put the ceasefire resolution on the agenda and your continued investment in genocide. It's disturbing that we have all signed up and then you've cut our times to humanize Palestinians because you completely stripped them of their humanity, to absolve yourself from being complicit in genocide. You have a role in deciding to vet out what San Marcos invests in and you have a say in where our tax money goes. Now is not the time to be indifferent. We are the future and we cannot see a future without the liberation of Palestine. Last city council meeting, we, the students and concerned community members of San Marcos, demanded to see issues brought onto the agenda. To reiterate our demands, one, call for a permanent, immediate, and bilateral ceasefire in Palestine. This will not only definitively show that you council members stand with humanity, this city stands with humanity, but it will also help protect members of the community who have been targeted since October seventh, seeing as antisemitism, Islamophobia, and anti-Arab hate have skyrocketed. Two, commit to divestment efforts for the city of San Marcos to organizations and companies that have ties and support the Israeli occupational and genocidal regime. Finally, we want San Marcos to pass a resolution to redirect San Marcos investments to reflect a commitment to ethical considerations and social responsibilities. The city needs to align itself with values that prioritize peace, human life, and community well-being. The genocide in Palestine is a long history of colonialism, insatiable greed, and exploitation, which the city is profiting off of. We all have an obligation to stand up against injustice, particularly as it pertains to massacring innocent civilians. We have shown up and will continue to show up until you represent our voices. I will not stand here and attempt to convince you to humanize Palestinian people just because you have normalized aggression and violence on black and brown bodies, bodies. You do not need to know anything other than they are human beings deserving of life. We refuse to be silenced. And with the remainder of my time, I would like to ask what it would take for you to put it on the agenda. That wasn't rhetorical.
This is a non-agendide agendized item and we will not.
I'm using the remainder of my time.
Thank you.
To ask you a question.
Thank you. Jack? Greenspun, followed by Lawrence Rodriguez? Jack? Greenspun? Followed by Lawrence Rodriguez? Followed, I'm, I thought that was Shiro that just spoke. Shiro? My apologies.
I'm sure you are all aware of the ethnic cleansing of the Palestinian people, whether you want to admit it or not. Rebecca Jones refers to it as a confusing conflict. What about stripping the indigenous from their land is confusing, Rebecca? Similar to how the colonizers did the indigenous people of the land we are on? Or how about the forty-nine point six million dollars that will be going to the San Marcos law enforcement? Why not putting a percentage of that into making housing more affordable for the middle and lower-class families within San Marcos? It's ironic how poverty is the leading cause in violent crime and yet you are putting fifty-four point seven percent of the city budget towards law enforcement, almost like you can predict what will occur in the future due to your poor budgeting balancing skills. I do not come up here today as an Arab. I do not come up here today as a Muslim, but I come up here as a human being. We demand you put a permanent ceasefire resolution on the agenda and to no longer continue staying silent about the genocide that has sadistically killed more than forty thousand innocent civilians and fifteen thousand children. It's not possible to, it's not impossible to pull off. All it takes is two city council members or the mayor to have it on the agenda. Get comfortable with seeing us show up to every meeting if putting it on the agenda is not in your plans. Palestinian Arabia, thank you for not kicking us out and letting us speak this time, Rebecca, like you should.
Next up will be Jack Greenspun, followed by Lawrence Rodriguez, followed by Sean Marshand. Jack, are you here? Okay, Lawrence Rodriguez, followed by Sean Marshand, and then Gil Markman. Go ahead, Lawrence.
Good evening, council, city members of San Marcos. Twenty twenty-four will go down in history as the most shameful academic year in our entire generation. With all the illegal encampments and vandalism and the blatant antisemitism, never in my life have I seen such a disgrace at what used to be honorable institutions. I'm absolutely appalled at the pathetic state of affairs. This academic rot is now bleeding into city council meetings across the country where all sorts of bigoted, misinformed, and willfully ignorant lost souls are desperately trying to force their false narrative onto everyone at the local level. I would absolutely hate to see another encampment spring up at CSUSM and bring more of this havoc here locally in our local university here in San Marcos. TikTok and social media is a huge factor in this as prior generations did not have access to so much garbage. TikTok once got people to eat Tide Pods, cook chicken in Nyquil, among other stupid fads and trends, and now it has also mobilized an entire generation of youth into becoming anti-Zionist antisemites. I feel very much for Jewish students on college campuses who now have to deal with an explosion of antisemitism, all in the name of so-called Palestinian rights. In grad school, I had the chance to visit Israel and it totally blew my mind. All the lies I was exposed to were proven to be false when I went there. There was no apartheid, no occupation, no genocide. There was indeed conflict. I've been to Jericho in the West Bank. I I visited the border of Gaza instead of as an American, and I was confused at this concrete bus stop waiting for a bus that never came. Turns out it was a bomb shelter, the same kind of bomb shelter that just several miles away, hundreds of Nova Music Festival goers were killed in with grenades, bullets, and some burned alive like a bunch of rounded up fish in a barrel. This is antisemitism two point O, aka anti-Zionism. Jews throughout history have been hated for their religion, then for their race, and now for their country. Anti-Zionism is always antisemitism. Zionism is simply the concept for Jewish people to be a free people on their own land. Yes, it is their land. Go there and you will find thousands of years of Jewish history everywhere. Anti-Zionism is a form of bigotry, no less prejudice than anti-civil rights for African-Americans, anti-pride for LGBT, and anti-suffrage for women. Just remember that on October seventh, Saturday morning, in San Diego's Balboa Park, there were hundreds of Arabs and Muslims celebrating the attack and the genocide of Jews that happened that just happened that day. Yes, October seventh was a one-day genocide, and that is the only genocide that exists in that land where Arabs are trying to wipe out Jews over and over again. Nothing makes me sicker knowing that Hamas came to Israel, killed as many Jews as they could, including babies, raping and killing women, and burning elderly people alive, and then running back to Gaza with hostages, hiding among schools, hospitals, and mosques, all while launching rockets and attacks against Israeli civilians. Every baby in Gaza is a bulletproof vest for a Hamas fighter. Their culture celebrates death. Jewish culture celebrates life. Hamas has gotten so many of their own people killed as this is their strategy. Even today, Yahya Sinwar, today, in headline news, was quoted as saying civilian deaths in Gaza are a necessary sacrifice for their jihad against Israel. San Marcos do not play into the hands of antisemitism. They make very false claims and it's just bullshit. Thank you.
Up would be Sean Marshand, followed by Gil Markman, and then Aaron Weiss. Sean?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Jones, Deputy Mayor Jenkins, and members of the city council. My name is Sean Marshand, a member of the community and a recently retired Assistant Chief of Police with the Oceanside Police Department. I'm here tonight to speak briefly on the subject that has recently come to my attention. I've become aware of a contingent of people that have concerns regarding the conflict taking place in Israel. This contingent has taken upon themselves to visit various city council meetings to pressure local government to render a proclamation or opinion related to this conflict. This pressure often takes the form of divisive language and communication intended to shock the conscience and force an emotional reaction. I have concerns regarding this conflict as well, but I am unable to effectively understand the nuances and history of this conflict due to the massive amount of religious, regional history, religious history, emotion, and actions taken by those involved on both sides. As this council knows, the act of governance at the local level requires a great deal of time and effort to make the best decisions for the community. Many times, these decisions have far-reaching impacts for the future of this city. Knowing this, I believe that any local governing body should focus their attention and efforts on the delivery of city services and addressing local issues of public safety while being fiscally responsible for their constituents. I do not believe it is a good practice for local government to render an opinion on international conflict. This exceeds the authority of local government and, at best, serves to divide people and preclude them from seeing one another. Too many issues have been relegated to a binary choice. It has become a matter of being with or against. The middle ground of appreciation for one another has shrunk in the face of the loudest voice instead of allowing critical thinking and understanding to take place. This city council operates with the best interests of the community it serves. Please continue your meaningful work at the local and regional level. Please leave international diplomacy to those in the position at the federal level empowered to do so for our country. Taking a stand on an international issue such as the conflict in Israel can compromise the safety of all and empower those prone to uninformed action to take that action. Please continue the great work you all do for this community. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Next up is Gil Markman, followed by Aaron Weiss, followed by Yosef Alassi.
Thank you, Mayor, council member, city staff. My name is Gil. I'm a resident here in San Marcos, a homeowner, a Jewish and Israeli. And I really appreciate the work that you do. And so far, I've only seen the outcome of this work as seeing the beautiful city that we're living on, and now I got a glimpse on the process of how you do that and you're experts at it at the highest levels. With that, dealing with a conflict on the other side of the ocean is a different scope and it takes a different knowledge and perspective. I can give you tons of information or perspective or or data points explaining why my side is right or telling things about the other side. The perspective I want to emphasize, however, is a practice that I've that I'm seeing with these folks here. Yeah, sign, sign is one, thank you, thank you, if you can, if you can flip the other sign with the pig on it. So there are several words that are used or phrases that are used like a dog whistle. We whistle, the the dog whistle and only dogs can hear it. And there are two things that these folks are doing that only Jewish and Israelis and Arabs can understand what they mean, and they are here to threaten and to exclude Jews. One is pictures of pigs that.
Present on the other side.
And the, thank you, guys.
No need.
And the other, the other thing is the word intifada that they were chanting. Intifada is a violent riot where each one takes whatever they can and in all means necessary hurt Jewish people. I've lived through two of those and they are talking about globalized intifada, meaning continue chasing me, trying to murder me and my family when I'm here. So they don't want to kick me out of Israel. I'm not in Israel, I'm here. And they're using this word intifada. This word means nothing to Americans. They know what it means, we know what it means. A city that would put this thing on the agenda would signal them that this is a legit, legit terminology and would show the Jews what they are trying to show us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gil. Next up is Aaron, followed by Yosef, I'm sorry, Aaron Weiss, followed by Yosef Alassi, followed by Jake P. Aaron Weiss, are you still with us? Yosef Alassi, followed by Jake P., then it will be Justin Ganz. Yosef?
Hi there, my name is Yosef Abasi and I came here to use my voice and raise awareness about the atrocities taking place in Gaza. As you may be aware, since October seventh, Gaza has been devastated and decimated by indiscriminate bombing of the IDF supported with our tax dollars resulting in the annihilation of over forty thousand Palestinians, mostly women and children. We must support and call for an immediate ceasefire, and I don't want my tax dollars supporting a regime that has declared war against innocent civilians. You know, San Marcos is in of a progressive multicultural city where everyone, regardless of age, religion, ethnicity, et cetera, can interact together with respect and dignity. The young people gathered today want to live in an inclusive world and as much as we are here to listen to you. are here to listen to you. I hope that you listen to our concerns and demands to call for a ceasefire in Gaza and end to this genocidal war. Thank you.
Up is Jake P., followed by Justin Ganz, and then after Justin, it will be Angelina Guzman.
Jake, pardon. Considering you made respect a point throughout the meeting today, I would think it would be appropriate for you to show us the same respect that we have shown you for the past five hours. I come here to second a call for a bilateral, immediate ceasefire resolution that has been called by my constituents. The war in Gaza needs to come to an end, and the resolution that Biden has proposed is insufficient. On top of this, to relate the matter more closely to the jurisdiction that you all have as City Councilmembers, we would like to propose an ethical investment campaign. This is a simple campaign where you look at the investment policies that you have and delegate which of those companies have ethical, have practices that reflect the values and ethics of the city of San Marcos. Our money, our tax money is being spent on these companies, so I think it is important that the ethics of our city is reflected within these companies. This has been spearheaded by cities such as Hayward and Richmond. The Richmond Mayor Eduardo Martinez is quoting that our cities have a responsibility to make investments that build cities, not in destruction. I would advise you all as leaders of this community to educate yourselves on the conflict. I don't think that your education should come from us, nor should it come from Israeli supporters. I would just like to say that I am a Jewish student who is in support of Palestine, of a ceasefire resolution, and of divestment. They are using their Judaism to play a victim card, which I think is disgraceful towards Judaism as a religion. Zionism is antisemitic. I think we should make that very clear. It makes a certain population of Jewish people more important than the rest of us Jews who are not living within Zionism. It is extremely exclusive, and many people cannot pay to live there. I would just like to second a call for divestment. We need to invest in companies that are building society and not destroying it. Thank you. And just to remind you guys, your silence is complicity.
Thank you, Jake. Next up, Justin Ganz, followed by Angelina, and then it will be Shosh. Justin Ganz.
Hello. So I wish I had more time to speak, but first off, two weeks ago at the State of the City event, I thought it was shameful, and I found the whole event concerning. It starts at 7:30 a.m. on a Wednesday. You're either invited or you pay for expensive tickets. It's inaccessible, it's exclusionary, and demeaning for community members who just want to keep up with developments in their city. It's also difficult to find information about the event beyond the City Council Agenda website. We didn't want to disrupt the event, but we were pushed to do so. Mayor Jones and others had denied us a public comment and later continued to lie by claiming the event was private. We want to see a simple resolution calling for a permanent and immediate bilateral ceasefire placed on the agenda. Numerous U.N. agencies and human rights groups have suggested this. Although it is only symbolic, a City Council resolution sends a clear sign to our president that we don't want to see a reversion to the status quo in Gaza. Rather, we want to see true peace and Palestinians living, no longer living under an illegal military occupation and apartheid regime. In the same way that we have a climate action plan, albeit an abysmal one, but a plan nonetheless, we should have guidelines for preventing any indirect complicity in human rights violations. This is not a world issue, but a sign that our city values life and justice for those who are most oppressed. Over 100 U.S. communities have passed ceasefire resolutions, including one city in Michigan that passed a resolution supporting the boycott, divestment, and sanction movement. To respond to previous speakers, there is no middle ground when the issue is genocide. All babies are innocent, and true colors are being shown to suggest anything otherwise. And intifada, in the most literal sense, just means uprising in Arabic. So if I were to say the Warsaw Ghetto uprising, I would literally use the word intifada in the translation. People are lying to suggest it means anything else. Palestinians are uprising against an illegal occupation and an apartheid regime. Additionally, as a San Marcos District One resident, I would like to see the budget address housing and transportation issues. We need more affordable housing and robust public transportation, but what we need is to redesign our city for sustainability and affordability for all people. Development projects should only be taken on if the necessary safeguards are in place to address issues of poverty and displacement. And if I may directly respond to prior comments made by both residents and our mayor, if private property is not a concern of the City Council, what is? Is the city not responsible for the living conditions of its residents? And I have found your comments about divisiveness incredibly tone deaf considering that others are struggling with affording housing and are being displaced from communities their families have lived in for generations. At the very least, you could give your concerned residents your full attention as they speak on the issues that weigh heavily on them. That's it.
Thank you, Justin. I would like to make one comment for the record. Everyone had the opportunity to show up to the State of Your Community event, which is a specific community event that's held the week prior to the State of the City, which is, it was at the Community Center, 4 o'clock to 6 o'clock, free for anyone to come and find out what's going on in the city. I started that when I was elected as mayor, so I started that in 2019. Staff goes through a lot of work. There's free food, and it's a resource fair for everyone to find out about what's going on in the community. So I did want to set that straight for the record. Angelina Guzman, followed by Shosh, and then it will be Christina after that. Angelina?
Yes, and before I speak, I would like to see if Adon would be able to speak by the end of the night, as he was rightly supposed to. As our prior attempts to appeal to your humanity have seemingly failed, I will be trying to approach things from a logical lens. Our local government has sung praise for Cal State San Marcos, the university which is the heart of the city, and yet we have been willfully ignored. Our calls for peace have been combated by obstructionism. We, the students of San Marcos, members of one of the many Students for Justice in Palestine organizations found across the country, do not feel heard. We are continuing to ask for a resolution calling for an immediate and permanent bilateral ceasefire in Gaza and the Middle East, as well as the release of all kidnapped Palestinian hostages and Israeli hostages. We are made aware of the acceptance of the U.S.-sponsored ceasefire agreement, but has yet to be instituted and does not have any solution to be permanent. You have previously mentioned that the City Council does not handle world issues. We are not asking for you to handle foreign policy. We are simply asking you, as people who are supposed to represent your constituents, to hear our voices, to consider what we are asking, and for it to make its way onto your agenda. What happens after that will be out of our control, but we hope you will heed our words. We are also calling for full accessible transparency in city investments as a first step towards divestment. Other California cities, such as Richmond and Hayward, have proven that these steps are well within your means. It is fair for taxpayers to know how their city taxes are being distributed, with this information being easily accessible on the city website. Council meetings should not be inaccessible to the public. The job of City Councilmembers and the mayor is to represent their city, the very people who are responsible for their employment. City Council meetings, such as the one held on our campus, a campus operated off of our tuition funds, are not private events. They are available for all public members to attend, and it is demeaning to treat your constituents differently depending on whether or not they paid for seating. As we've seen a Juneteenth acknowledgement make its way onto the agenda, I feel it is appropriate to share an excerpt from Angela Davis's book, Freedom is a Constant Struggle, as the historical connections between oppression of marginalized community of colors and Palestinian liberation is something that runs deep. She wrote, "Whenever you conceptualize social justice struggles, you will always defeat your own purposes if you cannot imagine the people around whom you are struggling as equal partners." The social justice movements, the students at San Marcos, including the movement to call for a permanent ceasefire in Gaza, is just as important as any local social justice issue. This is why, once again, we are asking for a resolution calling for an immediate and permanent bilateral ceasefire in Gaza. Full transparency, equity towards community members, and listening to the voices of the public should be your top priority, always. Thank you.
Excuse me for one moment. I'm sorry. Is, are you, are you Shosh? Sorry, I have a lot of speakers slips up. Were you Shosh? Angelina, okay. All right, so now Shosh is next, followed by Christina, and then Aiden will be next, and then we have one more after that.
I'll be short.
Yeah.
Hello, Councilmembers, and thank you for your time. The current situation in the Middle East is not a local issue. Hamas, Israel, and the U.S. government do not adhere to the resolutions passed here in San Marcos, and therefore, there is no reason for the city of San Marcos to pass a resolution on this subject. The city of San Marcos should be using resources on local issues that directly affect San Marcos, issues like education, infrastructures, homelessness, cultural life, and the safety of its local citizens. Antisemitism is already on the rise in the U.S. and around the world, and violence levels as well. A local resolution essentially condemning Israel would likely increase antisemitism even more in this area. There is no reason to further divide the community. Local governments, like the city of San Marcos, should be working locally to strengthen the community, reduce hate, and unite its citizens. I urge you to stay committed to local issues affecting San Marcos and not pass the divisive resolution. I am a resident of San Marcos. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is going to be Christina, followed by Aiden, followed by Georgina. No. I don't think Georgina. Sorry. Christina?
That's me.
Hi.
Hello, San Marcos City Council. I come to you with no news that you don't already know. Israel, with 100% assistance of the United States, is murdering innocent civilians by the hundreds and thousands. We have witnessed some of the most cruel and inhumane crimes committed in real time, yet the criminals are still at large. The majority of the world is saying no more. We do not condone the horrendous attacks being made to innocent lives, and yet peaceful protesters are being brutally beaten for demanding an end to genocide. I just saw this great program helping the youth that struggle with mental health, but I can't help but think about the hundreds of children in Palestine who will suffer years of psychological trauma because of what we did to them. It's a shame that the city can't continue to financially help Let's Face It Together. It kind of makes you wonder, if our country's military and weapons budget wasn't so absurdly large, there would most definitely be funds to support great programs like Let's Face It Together. Do you ever think about all of the resources you could provide your constituents with if our country wasn't abusing our money by murdering innocent civilians both across seas and right here in America? Mayor, you kept saying that you can't do this and you can't do that, you need to stay in your lane. It's extremely discouraging to hear someone that's supposed to look out for the well-being of people not even acknowledge the people's complaints and concerns. It seems you don't like to take accountability for anything, but you said we need to be working together to make sure everyone is being supported. You work with the people who can make the changes we desperately need, but with the way you respond to your constituents' concerns, it's very hard to believe you do any advocating for us. I'm tired of having my money taken from me to go bomb refugee camps. I'm tired of having my money taken from me to send disgusting soldiers to sexually abuse girls and women all over the world, and I'm tired of you acting like it's not a big deal. I'm calling on you to help us amplify our voices. We are calling for an immediate and permanent bilateral ceasefire resolution. Please add this to the agenda. Please help us save what sliver of hope we have left for humanity. Please.
Christina, next up is Aiden. Is Aiden gone? Okay. All right, oral communications is over. We're on to reports. Adon. One of you can speak. I thought that I said Adon, so I, my apologies. I am not doing that on purpose. Adon is up next.
My name is Adon Abakin-Brown, as you've heard, and might I suggest that you probably just ask people how to pronounce your name instead of playing the guessing game with it? I'm here to just tell you the story of Ahmed Al-Najjar. Two weeks ago, in a designated safe area in Rafah, a southern region of Gaza Strip, the IOF sent airstrikes directly onto a refugee camp where displaced Palestinian families were taking refuge. They fired at least seven bombs, each made from the U.S., each weighing at least 2,000 pounds, and as you could imagine, the weight could kill a person. So the actual explosion, the impact from the explosion was so great that it blew the limbs off of children. It blew off their heads and their arms, and this is well documented, as opposed to the claims that Israeli officials had made with no documentation. One such child was 18-month-old Ahmed Al-Najjar, the youngest of his family. He was killed along with his mother Fatin, his sister Huda, and his brother Arkan. His father buried Ahmed without his head. This is just one drop in the ocean of misery that has befallen all of the Palestinian people of Gaza by the occupational regime of Israel. Our money is going towards these bombs rather than fair living conditions for the people of San Marcos and the greater county of San Diego. Passing a resolution for an immediate and permanent bilateral ceasefire is the absolute bare minimum to act against this injustice. Whether you consider this a local issue, whether you consider this an important issue to consider, it is your, it is your responsibility to be our voice and to listen to us and to have some humanity and to treat all children across all the world as if they are your own. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to reports. Sandeg, first report. The most notable thing that we had on the agenda on, oh gosh, it's been now almost two weeks, is the 125, providing the resources to move that up in getting rid of the toll. And so what we talked about, one of the things that I brought up is Supervisor Joel Anderson was talking about the 67 and how we had provided, or we had told the taxpayers of San Diego County that we would have that as one of our items with Transnet that we would be funding. That didn't end up happening yet so far, and he brought up the issue of the residents of Ramona and San Diego Country Estates and Julian and all of that not able to actually get out of their properties when there is a fire. And so one of the things that I brought up too is that, well, if we're not, if we're not going to follow through on our promises to the taxpayers of San Diego County, and it's not even basic just that they could actually get out of their properties, that's actually infringing on their safety equity, which is not something that I would agree with. So we had a lot of discussion about that. There are still several projects that are on the Transnet list that have not been funded. Most of the discussion really was whether we get rid of a toll and use taxpayer money for that, to get rid of the toll. Yet, many of the San Diego County residents that continue to pay sales tax that the taxpayer dollars go to would not even benefit from that. It would be getting rid of a toll for the 125. So there will be more discussion about that. It was not a vote, it was more of an informational item, discussion of what we're going to do. So there's going to be a lot more discussion about that in the future. This Friday is the Tribal Summit, and I, but there's nothing really on the agenda for action item. And then we will have our regular board meeting two weeks from that, which I want to say is the 27th. Anyway, that's where we're at on that. League of California Cities, California, Councilmember, Councilmember Ed Busgrove.
Thank you, Mayor.
California Cities.
Yes, we met yesterday at Carlsbad, and we had a guest speaker, the outgoing CEO of Sandeg, Colleen Clemenson. She gave us a pretty good roundup of where we are with respect to the current budget programs that are in place, some expectations that they have with funding, and it was, it was very nice to hear from her. Her last meeting will be Friday at the Tribal Summit, and that's when our new CEO will take over, Mr. Orso, on take over, Mr. Orso, on the following Monday. We did get a fairly quick review of some of the legislation that's pending in Sacramento. There were some where we have an opposition as a league, not necessarily as a city. Some were in favor, others were standing by, but the fact is that the governor submitted a budget that the Senate and the State Assembly both disagreed with as far as the priorities, where the money should go, where cuts should be made. So they have to the, into this week to submit their version of what they believe the budget should be, and it has to be approved by the governor to go into the new fiscal year. So while we did get a pretty good rundown on some of the items that are pending, frankly, all of them are in flux until the budget gets resolved. So I do have that hard copy, and it was sent to me, email, if any of the members wanted, I could forward it to you with some of the positions and opinions, but we are kind of waiting to see what happens after the end of the week.
Okay.
I do want to, if I may, I do want to add that the League did host a legislative update a week ago, I believe it was, and they did record it, so they did send that out, the recording of the legislative update, if anybody's interested in, in watching that.
Is it a link, did you say? Is it a video?
It's a Zoom.
Okay, maybe you can get that to Phil, and he'll send it out to the whole council.
I can forward that to you, Phil.
All right, awesome, thanks. North County Dispatch Joint Powers Authority.
Thank you, Mayor, nor report, our next meeting will be at the end of August.
Okay, sorry, skipped out of order, North County Transit District. I was so excited about today of, of our little ribbon cutting there at North City. Did you have more to add?
I just want to, I'll make it short. We had a, you know, a lot of organizations have board retreats. We had a board forward, because if you think about it, when you go to a retreat, you're really talking about the future, you're not talking about retreating backwards. So anyway, we had an all-day board forward on May 31st. We, we took the coaster from Oceanside Transit Center down to Solana Beach, and we had a board meeting, and I'll just give you a generalization. It was a strategic priorities overview and then projects and initiatives update. Lots of items discussed, but I won't go into all of those. And then we took a bus over to Escondido and toured the bus yard over there, and also went to the Sprinter repair, I don't know what you call it, the repair facility, where the trains go in and, and they're serviced, and then we rode the Sprinter back to Oceanside. So it was a great event, and we're very excited about NCTD Plus.
And the microtransit.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, and do you want to, do you want to talk a little bit about that to the public? Just a little bit about the microtransit, in case they didn't hear everything that.
Well, Chris talked about it.
Yeah, I know they had it, but maybe what the website is, if they wanted to find out more about it.
I don't have it in front of me.
Well, I think you could just go to GoNCTD.com, and then I think there's a link on there, if I'm not mistaken.
Probably, yeah.
All right, okay. Sorry.
That's okay.
You can also download the app directly from your App Store.
Yeah, I got the app today.
Yep, but, but the app has information as well.
Yep, exactly. Okay, Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Musgrove.
Did we skip the Joint Dispatch Powers Authority? Or did I miss that?
They didn't meet.
No report, we're meeting at the end of August.
You missed that, sorry, because I had gone out of order, I was so excited to get on to the next stage.
I was so engrossed with NCTD, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
You got the Reader's Digest, Bert.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We got, we had a report from our CEO on several items, specifically community events, some of the outreach that's going on right now between Oceanside and Vista, the two new member agencies, the Solar Plus program, and the Cape Furvo Geothermal Project, which I reported on about a year, year and a half ago, and it was, it was a non-obligatory contract we have with a company that wants to start geothermal power in the desert of, my gosh, I think it's in Utah, not Nevada. So we lock into the service on the assumption that they're able to fulfill the obligation to start providing power, and they are ready to do that starting in 2026. So that'll be yet another clean energy source that will be fed into the California grid, and then the residents, yeah, the residents of the Clean Energy Alliance will then get those credits, and that all goes towards our Climate Action Plan, which, as, as we've had discussed in the past, being members of the Clean Energy Alliance effectively gets us to where we need to be on our Climate Action Plan goals. We had a regulatory update from Tim Lindo from Keys &amp; Fox, talking about case developments with the CPUC, which can get a little frustrating for us, resource adequacy, which if you don't know, every service provider is required to essentially overobligate on contracts to ensure that there's enough energy available for the CPUC and Cal ISO to redistribute power in the event of a shortage in any particular area, so Northern California, which has very hot weather during the weather time, demands on, from air conditioning systems, could start putting really high demands on the grid up there so that agencies, even in Southern California, the contracts we have brings power in, goes up there, feeds the grid, and keeps the brownouts from happening. And ultimately, while we do have to have the contracts in place, we don't sustain the financial loss. It all goes into a specific pool of available energy because electricity is on demand, it's not oil or gasoline which sits in a tank. You have to have the contracts in place to get the power coming in, so it just routes it towards us. And lastly, talked about forecasting for the upcoming budget, and because we only provide electricity and not gas, our budget is extremely cyclic. It benefits from the warmer weather because people use more electricity, which funds the system, which keeps our rates down, but in the wintertime, when we don't use as much electricity, the heat generally comes from natural gas or other sources, SDGNE, PG&E, and, who'd I forget, Cal Edison, they benefit from selling that. So we're looking at a methodology to balance out our rate structures so that it tends to look a little less like a roller coaster and more like on a month-a-bump basis, you're essentially paying the same, even though you may not be using the same amount of electricity, then when you start using more electricity in the warmer months, you won't get hit with a spike in your rates. So that's something we're looking into to try and offer a little bit more predictability. And we got a notice that a week from today, on the 17th, there will be a town hall meeting for Spanish speakers at the Morris B. Vance Community Room at Vista City Hall, and that will be put on by the Clean Energy Alliance for our customers that are not fluent in English or not adverse in English, that they can come in and get all the questions answered, and it will be provided free of charge for actually anyone that's in the clean energy field, so effectively anyone along the 78 corridor. And that, the information on that is available on the Clean Energy Alliance website.
The 17th or the 18th?
It's the June 17th.
That's Monday, not Tuesday.
It's a week from today, today's 10th?
Today's the 11th.
Is it? My Alpha Day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Monday, thank you.
Sorry.
I spent too much money on this watch.
And what's the website?
It is literally TheCleanEnergyAlliance.org.
Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, City Council Business visits, Alliance Jiu-Jitsu, Councilmember Sunella, and Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Sure. So last week, Deputy Mayor Jenkins and I visited, actually a really fun visit. You don't, you don't always know how these are going to go, they're usually better than I think they're going to go, and this one was especially one of those, and we visited Alliance Jiu-Jitsu, which is off of San Marcos Boulevard, and they're part of a bigger international federation with over 400 gyms worldwide. They only have four in San Diego currently, although they are looking to already expand here in North County, just in six months from being open here in San Marcos. They already have over 150 students, and I think they, I think they had a first-year goal of about, was it 200 or 250? I can't remember, but right around that range, so they're well on target to where their, their business goals are, as far as their, their students. They also have contracts or customers within law enforcement at every level, local, state, and federal. I think you mentioned Carlsbad in particular is one of their, a lot of customer, a lot of law enforcement from Carlsbad PD utilize their gym and, and, you know, work on their skills, and they really focus not just on the physical aspects of jiu-jitsu, but also the, you know, the mental aspects of being able to de-escalate situations and try to prevent things from happening, but being, also being prepared in the event that something, if it were to escalate, that those potential victims would be able to defend themselves. The head instructor is Vinnie, which is, he's the gentleman there in the black t-shirt standing next to me. You can't see it in the photo, but they made us take our shoes off, and I think that's the first political picture I've ever taken with my shoes off, and so that was kind of fun, because we were, we were standing on some mats, and luckily, the Deputy Mayor and I all had matching socks, and everything was good, no holes, and so it all worked out well there. And then, but Vinnie's really, he's really impressive, actually. He's from Brazil, and he was a lawyer in Brazil, and he kind of, he kind of grew up in a family that was all around martial arts, and that's what kind of where his passion came from, and then he, when he moved to America, you know, he got more involved with jiu-jitsu and ended up, you know, becoming a master instructor, and he's very well-recognized within the, the field, and now he's, he's opened up his own business. And with that, you want, you want to take it from there for the second half? Okay.
Sure, so Vinnie, they emphasize their personal health, discipline, principles in all aspects of life. They are very professional and very family-oriented, helping to the, to the extent of even helping some of the parents with, with kids and that sort of thing when they have some, some issues. They offer free monthly seminars, and you can find those on their website. They focus on personal safety, and also classes that include anti-bullying and, and women's self-defense. So if you go to their, if you look for them and find their website, then you can find out the free monthly seminars and classes they offer. They're also always looking for ways to give back to the community. They hope to open another business in San Marcos, and they just really love being in San Marcos and, and appreciate the vision that they, that we have for the community. So it was, yeah, it was a fun visit. I think you're right, you don't know what you're going to find out when you walk in.
Yeah, they, and what was, they live in San Marcos, but what was really neat is that they did, you could tell they did a lot of homework about the city.
Yes, they did.
Before we got there, because they kept telling us about the city and, you know, where we rank with crime and that kind of stuff, and so they were well-prepared.
Yes, yes.
That's cool.
It's a good visit.
Well, what is their other visit going to be? Is it going to be another jiu-jitsu, or is it going to be something totally different?
No.
Just curious.
Asasi, yeah, some, what's the?
Asasi?
Asasi, yeah, thank you.
Oh, yeah, everyone loves asasi.
And they, they went on about that as well, we don't, we don't have the notes on that, but that's, they don't, they don't think that the current offerings is, is up to par, and they're, they're going to bring something better that's, I guess, more.
Traditional.
Traditional, yeah.
Well, it's funny, because when you were saying how they do their homework, I knew it had to be something different. I don't know, and so it's asasi, interesting, all right, very cool. Okay, San Marcos Creek Project, you're up, Michelle.
Really quick update this week, we continue to work on the park.
Whoa, whoa, wait. Can you at least tell us the name of the park?
At 10:00 PM, no, I can barely.
I know, I know, sorry about that. Okay, any council commentary this evening? Yes, Councilmember.
The last, what, five, six months have been so incredibly difficult for our VHS Arena two residents, so I want to congratulate National Corps on the successful relocation, right? We got confirmation that all of our residents were successfully relocated, so I think that's a really proud moment for, for our city, for our staff, and all the work that went into guiding that process, and then obviously, the National Corps entire team, so I just want to acknowledge that and highlight that it's just going to be such a positive redevelopment project for, for our community. So thank you, everybody, for, for all that work.
Thank you. Okay, with that, this meeting is adjourned.